All right, good evening. The time being 7:06. Everybody turned on? Time being 7:06. All members of the planning board being present. Call this meeting to order. First item, actually, I'll let you folks in the audience know. Agenda item F, I, and J, which is 1167, 1177, 1187 Main Street, 1600 Shaw Sheet 1, and 1600 Shaw Sheen Street 2 are going to be continued tonight. So if you're here for any of those three hearings, you can leave because we won't be doing anything with those this evening. All right, with that, we'll move to agenda item A, which is approval of minutes for September 11, 2023, and September 25, 2023.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we accept the September 11 minutes.
All right, a motion made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second. And all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries.
And Mr. Chairman, the September 25th, make a motion we accept the September 25th meeting.
All right, a motion made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second. And all's in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Moving on to agenda item B, B1 Committee Reports. Any committee reports any of the members wish to make at this time? Seeing none, move on to agenda item B2 Town Planner's Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. One new application for the October 30th Planning Board meeting is going to be a signed special permit for 553 Main Street for a proposed new tenant, Planet Fitness. And then just to launch into the second point here, MBTA Communities. We had our third feedback session on the MBTA Community Zoning on Thursday, October 12th at the Tewksbury Senior Center. There were 27 registrants and approximately 150 overall attendees, primarily from Emerald Court. The meeting session intended to solicit feedback regarding the dimensional features of the proposed districts. And to inform the discussion, feedback was solicited from the Public Safety and Public Works Departments to provide context related to emergency response and resources as well as infrastructure capabilities and potential challenges. The intention for this workshop is to finalize district options for consideration at annual town meeting, May 2024. The majority of the discussion focused on the viability of each proposed site. The next steps in the process include presenting all findings from the public outreach sessions to the Select Board on Tuesday, October 24th, and to this board on Monday, October 30th, both which are regularly scheduled public meetings. The presentation for those two meetings will be a summary of the entire public outreach process and what the resident feedback was for all sites. From there, two sites will be submitted to the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities, EOHLC, formerly the Department of Housing and Community Development, for the pre-vote preliminary compliance review before town meeting, which may take up to 90 days, which is why we're backing that out to November. Much more exciting note, so we have some upcoming events, Halloween weekend, that I wanted to highlight for everybody. Friday, October 27th, we're calling Fall Fun Day, which is a replacement for the previously canceled Fall Festival. Apple Fest at the high school will be held on Saturday, October 28th, and then Safe Halloween will be Sunday, October 29th, also at the high school. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to agenda item B3, this is 307 Old Boston Road, as-built acceptance. We're going to continue that to our 1113 meeting. That brings us to, that brings us to agenda item C, which is 295 Main Street, signed special permit. Do I have a motion to waive the public reading?
So moved.
A motion made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second. And all's in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Do we have somebody here for 295 Main Street? Once you get settled, just to give you a name for the record, the floor is yours.
Sorry, I'm going to come over.
Did you hear the other one too?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Jeff Serra with Patton Brothers Signs. I'm just happy to have a full audience behind me of lawyers and architects.
Can you pull that down so we can hear you a little better?
Just to make me more anxious. So I'm here tonight on behalf of Citizens Bank at 295 Main Street. They have recently undergone renovation on the property and are also undergoing some branding changes. They're dropping the word "bank" from all their signs and changing the general look of it a little bit. They currently, previously, before the renovations, had three wall signs that were permitted and approved. They're in the process of replacing those signs. One of them has been replaced on the Main Street side of the building, which is permitted. There was, there is also one that has been put up on the drive-up side of the building that was put up inadvertently due to some miscommunication. That's one of the signs that we're seeking approval for. And the second sign we're seeking approval for is one over the main entrance. The signs are all in the same locations as the previous signs, and each one is smaller than the signs that were up there before. So we've got the one facing Route 2038. We've got the one facing the access road into the Walmart Plaza, and then the one that is above their entrance of their parking lot. They're all the same size. They're individual channel letters, raceway mounted, and mounted on the building again in the same locations as before. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Mr. Lozada. Excuse me. Just to confirm, all three signs are there as they are currently? They're just getting replaced with newer ones that are a little bit smaller?
Correct.
Okay. Any difference in the overall brightness of the signs?
No, they're actually not as bright because they don't have as much illuminated area. The old signs were cabinets where the entire background lit up, and these are just the channel letters themselves which light up.
Okay. I don't think I have any further questions.
Mr. Vitale.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So you said they renovated inside, right, as well?
I'm not sure about the inside of the branch.
Okay. I was just wondering whether they went to the modern design where there's no, there's no glass structures anywhere or something, but if you don't have the answer for me, that's fine. But, so, yeah, I'm willing to vote to allow the new sign. It looks fresh. It's a new, it's a new branding for you guys as well, correct?
Correct.
So you guys have been a staple in the community for years, and I'd be willing to allow that. There's not too many changes to it. So with that said, I'm all set.
Mr. Duffy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So really, the question is not whether you're replacing the sign, the sign itself is, is it's the fact that you're requesting three again.
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct.
So I'm going to say that there was a time when having three signs on that building was, was approved by, by a previous board for, I'm not sure what the reasons are, but I think it's because of the location of the building and it's, you know, its footprint on the, in the, in the group of buildings there. So I would say that I am also in favor of granting the waiver for the three signs. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman.
I think everything's pretty clear. Smaller signs, replacing existing signs. You know, I'm not typically one to go against the judgment of a previous board decision, so I think I'm good with this. I just, appears to be the way of the future. We don't have Dunkin' Donuts anymore. We're just Dunking, and now it's not a bank anymore, it's just citizens, so. But, you know, the rebranding and all of that, I expect we'll see a lot of this. Domino's did the same thing, right? So, but overall, I like that it's smaller, and having reviewed the site, I mean, three locations actually makes sense, considering 38, the main drive, and then the entrance itself, so seems reasonable.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Yeah, the chair's all set too. You're not asking for more, you're asking for the same or less, so no real reason to have a problem with that. All right. With that, I'll open up the audience. Anyone in the audience with any questions, comments, or concerns on this? Only once, twice, bring it back to the board. Mr. Lozada, which, which were our sections here?
So this requires an express waiver from Section 6210A5, which limits one single business in a detached building to one wall-mounted sign unless they're on a corner lot. This is not a corner lot by statute.
Okay. So take the waiver, I'm sorry, what is the pleasure of the board?
I'm making a motion, Mr. Chairman, that we approve the waiver.
Close first.
Oh, close, okay. Making a motion to close the public hearing.
All right, got a motion made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second. All's in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All's opposed, motion carries. On the, on the waiver.
Make a motion to approve the waiver, Section 6.2-10 was A-5, with the three signs as we just noted.
All right.
Second.
Motion made in second. All's in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All's opposed, motion carries. All set. Thank you.
Thanks, folks. Have a nice night.
Oh, sorry, and just a special permit.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's right. I'm sorry. So now you need it on the special permit itself.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the special permit with the approved waiver.
All right.
Second.
Motion made in second. All's in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All's opposed, motion carries. All right, all set. Thank you.
Thank you. Good luck.
Brings us to agenda item D, which is 1059 East Street, use special permit. A motion to waive the public reading?
So moved.
A motion made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second. All's in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All's opposed, motion carries. How you doing? Brad Capodano with Capodano &amp; Son.
Chairman Rothfuss with Consolidated Electrical Distributors.
What is this?
I was going to pull a permit for some minor interior renovation for this commercial building, and it triggered the use of a special permit, so I, I applied for the special permit. And that brings us to here. Basically, what we're trying to do is not change the footprint of the building outside or, but there's a couple of demising walls on the interior just to increase the showroom space, and that's going to be removed, and that would be it.
All right. We'll start with Mr. Vitale.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I know exactly where you guys are going into off East Street. It's a great location, access to 93 is awesome for people looking to get supplies.
Exactly.
You have some competition in town, you know that, right? Northeast is not too far away, but enough, far enough, but, you know, I don't have any problem with what you're trying to do. It's great to see new business coming into town. Where are you located now?
Right now, we're trying to open in 1051. So, yeah.
Okay. So it's your first store?
First, this will be our 25th in New England, so.
In New England?
Yes, correct.
Not around here?
Main, Vermont, New Hampshire, Saranac Lake, New York, and Hartford, Connecticut.
Oh, great, okay. So it's good to see a new venture coming into Tewksbury, and I wish you good luck. All set for me. Thank you.
Mr. Duffy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So are you going to be like a contractor supply, where you're going to have like a retail counter or the type of thing?
It's, yeah, we're electrical wholesale, we define ourselves as. It's definitely has a retail counter where contractors can come, walk in, purchase material, or most of our business is done over the phone, just making deliveries by a van. But, yeah, we're just there to service our electrician, electrical contractor customers, other contractors as well, but, yeah, mainly focused on electrical wholesale.
No, I didn't drive around the back of the building. Is there parking a lot around the back of the building?
There's a lot of parking at this, at this office park, you'd call it. It's probably 80 spaces in total, but, yeah, there's probably 40 back there, another, another 40 up front, so.
Okay. Okay. No, I think it's a great use of the building, and good luck to you guys, it's a good location.
Thank you. We won't be parking Mack trucks on the Main Street anymore. The Peterbilt store is there before, so, yeah, there's nothing like that going on, so.
All right, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. How do you stock your supplies at your, at this location? What would be your loading, unloading hours, things like that?
Loading and unloading will be done primarily 7:30 a.m. to about 4 p.m. We have shelving that we're looking to install in the warehouse space of this building. Mainly, it goes anywhere from light switches to outlets to breakers, panel boards, larger material like that, just on pallet racking or smaller shelving, so, in the warehouse.
Okay. And so is there like a central distribution center that will bring out deliveries to stock, to restock your shelves?
Mainly, it's ordered directly from vendor represented by a manufacturer's representative, and we purchase it through them. But it, it's direct to our store location as kind of stock and flow material to the customer.
Okay. So all your traffic will pretty much be during business hours?
Correct. Yeah, our business hours are planning to be 7 a.m. to 5 p.m. That's what it looked like the previous tenant had for hours. A lot of our business traffic is probably one to two customers per hour. If we get started, it's probably going to take a while to get going for our business, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No more comments. Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Lozada.
I think all my questions have been answered. Best of luck to you.
All right. Chair's all set as well. Let's talk to the office.
So just one question, Mr. Chairman. How many vans will you be having, and where will they be parked?
I'll have one van currently to deliver material, probably parked out back in one of the spaces near the bay door.
I didn't want you coming in with 30 vans and having more parked out front, so.
No, no.
That wouldn't be too good for the street, but I understand completely. Thank you.
Definitely. Thank you.
I'll open it up to the audience. Anyone in the audience with any questions, comments, or concerns on this one? Once, twice, bring it back to the board. What is the pleasure of the board?
I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing.
A motion made. Do I have a second?
Second.
A motion made in second. All's in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All's opposed, motion carries. As to the use special permit.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the use special permit for 1059 East Street, Consolidated Electric Distributors.
A motion made. Do I have a second?
Second.
A motion made in second. All's in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All's opposed, motion carries. Good luck and welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good luck.
All right, moves us on to agenda item E, 913 East Street, special permit, land disturbance, I'm sorry, site plan review, special permit, land disturbance permit. A motion to waive the public reading?
So moved.
Second.
Second. Motion made in second. All's in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All's opposed, motion carries. Once everybody's settled, if you give your names for the record, the floor is yours.
Mira Cousins, Civil Design Consultants.
Arnie Martel, proponent.
Jim Hanley, Civil Design Consultants.
So we're here proposing site plan approval, special permit, and a land disturbance permit for a proposed three-story self-storage facility at 913 East Street. So we'll give you guys a quick overview of the project here. So it's located near the Lumber Lane and Carter Street intersection. The total area of the site is approximately 1.1 acres. We have 517 feet of frontage on East Street. This site is located in the industrial one zoning district. Currently, there's two commercial buildings on the lot. There's two curb cuts along East Street. Approximately 73% of the site is either paved or covered by rooftop. And lastly, there's an isolated wetland located off-site to the south of the property, and the associated 100-foot wetland buffer zone crosses onto the property. So what we're proposing here is to raise the existing structures and construct a climate-controlled three-story storage facility with a building footprint of approximately 11,130 square feet. For access, we're proposing to maintain the Westerly curb cut and relocate the Eastern curb cut approximately 100 feet further east to minimize turning conflicts with the Lumber Lane and Carter Street intersection. So the distance between the two curb cuts will be approximately 330 feet. We are proposing reduction of total impervious area on the site by approximately 1,000 square feet. With that said, we are proposing to remove all existing drainage structures and replace it with new stormwater management system that's proposed to discharge into an existing infiltration pond that's located at the western corner of the lot. So the stormwater management system is designed to comply with the state and local regulations. For utilities, we're proposing to connect to the existing six-inch sewer service line within the site. And for water, we're proposing a new six-inch water service line from the main to the building. Lastly, parking. So the zoning bylaw requires a minimum of one space per three storage bays. The challenge is that we just have a preliminary architectural plan that don't have the final unit configuration. But if we had, we believe that one space per three storage bays would be excessive for this facility. So for example, if the average unit size was 150 square feet, this would yield 215 units and would require 72 parking spaces, which is way too much parking that a self-storage facility would ever need. So we reached out to our traffic consultant, and they guided us to the ITE standards, which shows an average peak demand of just .1 space per 1,000 square feet of storage space. So therefore, the proposed 32,340 gross floor area facility would just require three parking spaces according to the ITE standards. So we thought that number was too low, so as a compromise between the ITE and the zoning bylaw, we're proposing 12 spaces. With that, happy to take any questions.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, just to chime in. You might recall, we were here about two years ago, give or take, for the same site with another applicant. At that point, we were proposing, I think it was a 4,000-square-foot building addition and keeping the existing buildings, right? So this is different. This is taking all the existing buildings down, rebuilding with new construction. So I just wanted to clarify that, so you know.
All right, we'll start with Mr. Duffy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I noticed there was, there's a lot of power lines that could seem to have butted the property there. Are there, is that, is that an easement? Is that going over the property there?
Yes.
Can you give me a little detail on what's going on with that?
Yes.
Yeah.
We're not encroaching into the power line easement besides the parking and the, and the hot tub there. He can show you.
Yeah, so a portion of the easement, the power line easement cuts through our property. The other side of this same easement is on the other property. So the building has been set so that we're off of the, outside of that easement, but those are high-tension power lines that have been there, they're going to be there for, after we're done with this.
And I guess if you could just maybe explain the, your parking criteria, which you're proposing that Mr. Hanley just, just clear that up a little bit?
Yeah, so as Mira indicated, when we began the preliminary design, we were provided with the building four-floor plan, but all the units haven't been completely laid out yet. That'll happen during final architectural design. So because of that, we didn't have a specific number of bays. But when we just put some basic math on it and applied the zoning requirement, we came out with, was it 72 spaces, right? So that doesn't make any sense to us. So we reached out to our traffic consultant, they looked at ITE. They, ITE specifically has a, an indoor, climate-controlled, self-storage use, so we applied that number, and that comes up with three, right? So that kind of seemed like it was too low. All of this area is currently paved, as Mira said, about three-quarters of the site is paved, so we tried to provide what we thought was a reasonable amount of parking in a couple of different locations, and it still provides a reduction in impervious surface at the end of the day.
And so what is the, what is the number of parking spaces you're coming up?
12. Yep.
Okay. That's all I have for now, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Mr. Lozada.
Sure. I, I do tend to agree, three parking spaces would seem a little bit shy for this project. I think the only other thing that kind of stands out with regards to the parking to me is that a lot of the spaces seem, as they get pretty far away from the actual building itself. Is there a loading section in here? I see a canopy. Is that where you would anticipate folks pulling into?
Yeah, so Jim, if you want to flip that around.
Oh, sure.
Looking at the building on the right side, all the way on the right, there's a loading area, a covered, there'll be a loading, a covered loading area where, with a garage door, you can back right up to it. That's where the elevator will be. There'll be carts there, all that sort of thing. So that's really going to be your main access point. If somebody's going in to get something, they're going to be going in and out of there. They'll have their key fobs to use that location to go in and out of, and like I said, and it's also covered. If you look at that far right of the building, you see that covered area?
Yep.
That's the back end, that's the loading area.
Okay. How many cars would fit there side by side? Two? One?
On the loading area?
Yeah.
You could probably squeeze two. Realistically, you would want one that's set up with one car at a time.
Okay.
Yeah, you definitely could squeeze two here, but I think the idea is one, and then we try to provide the parking adjacent to that. The other thing to note too is that there are, on the first floor, there are a handful of units that will be loaded from the, from the parking area, and so spaces in front of that weren't counted in the 12. So if those people come in, chances are they're going to park right in front and further reduce what.
And how many units are up there? It was like a dozen?
It's four here, maybe another four.
We don't have the exact count on units.
Yeah, it might be 10, 12, give or take.
The exterior access units I haven't finalized yet. Once I get a little further in the approval process, that's when I'll have a consulting company come in. They'll monitor the area to see what the, you know, what the need is. So there's everything, you know, most of these buildings, if you look at them, they have units as small as five by five and units as big as 10 by 20. So obviously, I'll check the area, see what the demand is, and that, that way, that will do our final configuration as far as internally and exterior on those, on those exterior uses.
Okay. I think that's all the questions I have.
Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to cover a few items, I know ordinarily, a lot of people ask us for waivers from things like bicycle racks and so forth. This particular case, I find it, I guess one of the things I'd be considering that I know Mr. Duffy and I have considered in the past is, will there be onsite employees staffing this facility?
Yeah, one, one employee.
Okay. I mean, generally, we'd like to think, hey, if the employee wants to bike to work, it'd be nice to have a bike rack. I mean, I could conceive of a situation where someone maybe just wants to check on something in storage or retrieve something small from storage. So that's one thing where, you know, I'd like to see a bike rack put in, especially where we are going light on the parking. Seems like it would create a nice, nice synergy there.
Okay.
What's your thoughts on that?
Yeah, I mean, I don't see a reason why we can't. We'll have, we'll find a space for it. That's not something that I would say no to, that's for sure. I guess we just have to find the best area near that. Front corner will be the office area. There'll be an office in the front corner right by that loading dock, so if you'd want it right there, I would imagine, so, yes.
I'll leave it to Mr. Hanley and his team.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, it's a good comment because it was, Alex pointed it out in her review letter, we would ask for a waiver because of the use, but if, if the board sees the, the need for it, then certainly we can provide it.
Again, I mean, I just, I see a lot of, in the city now, a lot of people on bikes, e-bikes, you know, especially they park further away where the parking is cheaper, and then they're, you know, using their portable e-bikes to get to places, so.
Sure.
I think it's really catching on, so we want to encourage that. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Fattah.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I like the idea of a three-story building, not going too much higher than that, with the neighborhood involved there. I also like the idea of the carriages, so if somebody needs a carriage, they go up to the elevator to get their products, or their, their storage stuff, they can get it and come back down and walk it over to their car, it seems like it's a great, a great option for the people that are renting there. The hours of operation, that you'd have people coming in and out, do you think?
So we plan on, that hasn't been completely nailed down yet, there will be access to the building, so with obviously the technology of today, and everybody will have a key fob, so when you rent a unit, you get a key fob now, so they will have access to their stuff twenty-four hours a day. As far as hours of operation, you know, most likely it'll be like an eight-to-four thing, Monday to Friday, maybe a half a day on Saturday, one of those deals. I haven't got that far in exactly knowing when rentals will be. A lot of the sites now, too, you can rent right onsite, you don't even have to go into the office anymore. So we plan on doing a website, where you'll be able to rent a unit right on, right on a website, pick up your key fob, or depending on, you know, what the best technology, what the best fit is for us at that time, there might even be just a key code to get into your unit, get into the building. So when they rent it, they'll have their key code or their key fob, and they will have access to it. As far as the office hours, it would be, you know, something of a normal, normal, you know, eight-to-four, say, just, you know, five, six days a week.
So we had another facility that committed to town off of Woburn Street, and they provided security, you can do the same thing as far as cameras and so forth to protect people?
Yeah, yeah, there won't be security as far as a security person there, there will be complete, you know, every inch of the place will be covered besides their individual units, you know, for privacy.
Yeah.
But interior and exterior, yes.
Sure. And sidewalks, you're gonna provide sidewalks, I'm sure, right?
Yes.
That was an issue on the last site, if you recall, Mr. Hanley, but I thought, we don't have any control over that anymore, but I wish we did, but.
So the last approval for this, the previous owner wanted to do the addition on what was there existing.
Right.
I don't feel that was the best use for the site. They were also leaving what was there as far as no curbing, and just putting sidewalk over, 'cause it almost sheet flows across. I'd prefer to put granite curbing in there, I just think it's a nicer look, it's gonna look nicer, so that's what we're proposing, to do granite curbing with the sidewalks. I just think it's gonna look a lot nicer than no curbing that's there now, with just a, just a sidewalk going across it.
Yeah.
I'd like to have something a little nicer.
Sure.
So that, that's a really good point, just to reiterate that, we did have sheet flow that, for the previous approval or the current approval, there was sheet flow off of East Street that would, would be captured by the landscaped area, and then there was a sidewalk located approximately on the property line with a grass strip, so that cross-section has been revised to address Ani's comment there for a granite curb and a five-foot two-minute sidewalk.
So the sidewalk's gotta be bituminous concrete, or concrete concrete?
Yep, no, bituminous concrete.
Okay, so let's keep that in the record so there won't be any problems again?
Yes.
All right, we have other issues with that. And one of my concerns, I have bicycle racks, I don't agree with Mr. Chairman on fourteen one bicycle racks, I don't see anybody coming to that site on a bicycle trying to get some of their storage stuff and carry it away, but I mean, you never know these days, but they may go there, like you said, on, to review what's in there, I guess, but, I mean, I could go either way with that, I guess finding a site for it would be, a spot for it would be an issue, but not a big deal.
No, we have plenty of space, yeah.
There should be plenty of space to put a bike rack in, so whether it's used or not, it'll be there.
Just one more question I have, do you foresee any contractor bays being allowed there?
No, 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 I'd prefer not.
Right.
Yeah, that was the original approval for this, from, again, from the previous owner, and when I bought it, that was my original kinda thought, was to stick with the contractor bays, maybe do, come back and do a redesign of it, if you will, I wanted a newer, nicer building, but I think this fits that site a little bit better.
Yeah, I agree.
Than having a contractor bays, 'cause next thing, you know, just like you were talking to the previous guy here with the vans, I don't want trucks and vans and equipment and everything everywhere, I kinda, my plan is to keep it and own it, and at that point, I'd like to, you know, have it nice-looking at all times.
Yeah, I agree. With the contractor bays, I think also, it opens it up to different hours of people opening up cars, opening up bays, making noise in the neighborhood, so forth and so on, we don't want that at all, but, you know, my last comment is, I don't have a problem with the parking, it's not a site where you're gonna be going in at nine and leaving at five, you're gonna be coming in all hours of the day and just briefly picking up stuff and leaving, or dropping off stuff and leaving, and so the, the number of parking spaces, I think, is sufficient, as well as the bays you have and so forth and so on, so, but yeah, I'm all set, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, all right, so just one, I don't, I don't know off the top of my head, but do you, does anybody know what the tallest, like, U-Haul or Ryder truck is?
Fourteen feet.
Yeah, thirteen-six.
Okay, so fourteen-three's enough clearance for?
Yeah, that's what that's designed for, for, you know, any tractor-trailer or anything, can't be, the highest you can possibly be is thirteen-six for bridge over that.
Yeah, I just don't want anybody stirring in the side of your building.
Yeah.
'Cause, you know, I've seen people drive those rentals for a weekend.
Yeah.
They shouldn't.
Yeah.
As far as the entrances, I'm not gonna have a problem with that either, I don't think, because where the entrance currently is, is worse in terms of closeness to the intersection than where you wanna move it to, so it's, it's at best a little better, certainly no worse, so I don't see any reason why that's a major problem, you know, we'll see what we get back, but I mean, I don't have a problem with moving the other one, and you just said, these are gonna just be open, right? These are gated?
The building will be accessible, you'll be able to pull in, there won't be gated. I don't, I have kinda looked into that, with the access being off of East Street and being, the proximity, I don't want the gate there, 'cause I don't want somebody's car hanging out into East Street.
Exactly, that's sort of my point.
It's too busy of a road, I'd like them to come right in, and to go back to Mr. Fattah's point, that would be the reason for extra security cameras, and to make sure that we go with the latest technology with the key fobs and everything, 'cause you will be able to get to the building without a gate, you know, so I wanna make sure people think it's secure.
That's one comment I'd make, is that, you know, I would not want any gates there, and if you want gates, I'd want you to come back, 'cause I'd like to understand how they work, to not put anybody's back end of their car sticking out onto East Street when they try to do it, because it's not, it's just not gonna work that way.
No, I agree with you, at this point, we're not interested in putting a gate in.
Okay, all right, obviously, you know, engineering, the engineering consultant took out this, so we have to wait back, wait for that to come back, see what they have to say, but otherwise, for right now, I don't have any issue with what's presented, so.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to make a point of clarification for the parking, so I don't disagree that seventy-five would be excessive for the site, but I had noted in my review, we wanna make sure that we're rooting it in something that the board has the authority to do, so in order to do a strict parking reduction of the use as it's expressed in the parking table, you'd have to find a way to do thirty, you'd only be able to reduce it by thirty percent, and then, then you'd have to find a place to put reserve parking, so just for the benefit of folks listening, I had spoken with the building commissioner about how to best evaluate this use, because this isn't a traditional, all the units are drive-up, and that's how you access it, so evaluating only the first-floor units for strict adherence to the bylaw, and then the rest of it under, I believe, was section six-one-three-B, the board can make a determination for a use that's not expressly listed in the bylaw, which I think would be the upper floors, where they're going to be accessing just under the canopy and using the elevator, so just wanted to make that clear, that parking reduction's fine, but it's not going to be under the section that folks typically would do it under, just because you're not looking to figure out where to bank thirty spaces and use fifty of them, so, just wanted to make that clarification.
What's our number now?
So based on the analysis I had provided, thirteen, approximately thirteen drive-up storage units are results in four-point-three spaces under the bylaw, and then if we use the I T E data, the Institute of Transportation Engineers, for folks who don't know, at that point, ten spaces per thousand square feet, that shakes out to about two-point-one-three spaces for the two upper floors, resulting in about six-point-four-six, and that is within the twelve that they've proposed, so I think that that's fair.
All right, thank you.
So we're good, we're good number-wise, right?
All right. With that, I'll open up to the audience, anyone in the audience with any questions, comments, or concerns on this one? Okay, seeing none, what is the pleasure of the board?
Making motion, Mr. Chairman, do we continue the hearing till?
All right, we have seven-twenty on the thirtieth.
Good?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, so we have a motion to continue to seven-twenty on the thirtieth, so we have a second?
Second.
Motion made, second, all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries, all right, thank you, we'll see you next time.
Thank you.
Moving on to agenda item F, this is, the applicant has requested for continuance, we have this penciled in for seven-fifteen, so can I have a motion to continue this till seven-fifteen on the thirtieth?
So moved.
A motion made, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second, all's in favor, consider, uh?
Aye.
Say aye?
Aye.
All's opposed, hearing none, motion carries, all right, that brings us to agenda item G, which is eighteen-seventy-nine Main Street, this is Treehouse Brewing, Site Plan Review, Special Permit, continue from our nine-fifteen meeting, uh, nine-twenty-five meeting.
For the record, I'm Yara Cousins.
Let me just, since it's postponed this evening, 'cause we gotta notice it's gonna happen tonight.
You gotta come to the hearing.
If you just come it that way, people can hear what you're saying, if you come up to the podium.
The one now with McClellan Oil, I guess that was postponed, you just said, 'cause that's why we're here, so.
Yeah, the eleven-sixty-seven, eleven-seventy-seven, eleven-eighty-seven Main Street is continued to our next meeting, the applicant asked to have it continued.
Okay.
That didn't happen until after the agenda had originally been posted, so that's what I announced at the beginning, and then once we got to it, we just continued it to our next.
Oh, okay, we weren't here at the beginning, we showed up at quarter past seven, 'cause that's when it said on the agenda, so that's what we figured, so we thought we're gonna have it tonight.
So we won't hear anything on that tonight, we'll bring it up at our next meeting and...
Seven-thirty, two weeks from today.
Yeah, and we have that set for seven-fifteen.
Seven-fifteen again, okay, okay, all right, thank you.
Not a problem.
Could you tell me again when you postponed it till?
Until the thirtieth of this month at seven-fifteen.
And that decision was made tonight?
The request came in earlier today, we just continued it just now officially.
Wish we knew.
We didn't know either until they asked, that's why I announced it at the beginning, so people could leave, and then we went through the agenda, and now that we're at it, we actually continued it.
We came for the date of the time that we thought out was going on, we should've been here to begin with.
I mean, that's when I make the announcements for any changes that are made, before we start, and then we continue with the agenda in order until we get to whatever it is, at which point we officially continue it, once we get there.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, folks, when applications are requested for continuation prior to arriving at the meeting, the agenda online is updated, so I would recommend that before you head out, I receive continuation requests up until four-thirty P.M., 'cause that is when the town clerk's office closes, so I would recommend checking the town website, clicking on the planning board meeting, and that'll be the most up-to-date agenda.
I have no idea, that was the?
Yeah.
Thing to do.
Yep.
Okay, so.
All right, so back to eighteen-seventy-nine Main Street.
Yara Cousins, Civil Design Consultants. So I'm here to give the board an update.
Just, we all know who you are?
Yeah, Jim Hanley, Civil Design Consultant.
So we're here to give the board an update on where we stand with this project, so we've been continuing the past few meetings because we have a difference of opinion with D.P.W. on one issue regarding how the stormwater management standards apply to this redevelopment project, so we're confident that our design complies with the stormwater standards as a redevelopment project. Treehouse added additional experts to the team, who also agreed that we meet the stormwater standards as a redevelopment project. So last week, we had a productive meeting with the town staff, our team sent a letter to the town earlier today, further demonstrating how the project complies with the Mass D.E.P. regulations, so we're now waiting to get a response from the town and hope to resolve this one last issue.
Okay, so this is actually being done with town, and like, this doesn't have to go out to?
No, so this is an ongoing review with town staff, and ultimately, the Conservation Commission, who they are going to be paying a visit to on Wednesday, and how the Conservation Commission chooses to approve this plan, changes, what have you, will affect what this board approves.
Okay, all right, so we'll run through Mr. Duffy.
I mean, basically, I think we're kind of at a, at a little bit of a standstill here until, until you guys get some clearance on your, on your stormwater management and, and conservation issues, if I'm not mistaken?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so we'll leave it at that.
All right, Mr. Chairman.
No comments or questions at this time, Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Lozada.
No comments, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Fattah.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I have a number of comments, and I'd like to make them public tonight, I guess, but one of the comments I have is, this Treehouse Brewery Company, I know you're coming in looking for parking, but, so my question is, I've been to the site three times this week, and there are no parking spots available at the site when I went down three times to review the site, all right? Every, I drove to the parking lot, there was not one site, or one spot available for anybody to park in, three times that I was down there this weekend. So I guess my question to you through, and to Treehouse is, why come, I guess, in front of us with, with an idea of, of needing more parking, when in fact, the number of parking spots that are on-site should be sufficient as far as occupancy-wise, and what's happening in, in the building as far as how many people are going in there now on a regular basis? I mean, you wanna have an accessory site, and I know you may need that supposedly, but I guess I would be okay with if it was abutting this property, but not being abutting the property is one of my concerns, in this, in the issues that, that come with not, not abutting property, having to cross Main Street, having to stop traffic in both directions, actually four-way stopping if you want someone to push that button to come across to the site, so, so I guess my, one of my concerns is, are we looking at Treehouse in a way where their occupancy isn't on the standards that it should be? Because there's no parking anywhere else on-site. The previous site had plenty of parking, there was no issues, I've seen people parking in other locations on Main Street and on Lebowski Street to get to Treehouse.
Mm-hmm.
So, I mean, I guess my question to Treehouse is, you know, how many people are actually in the building at times? Is their occupancy at where it should be, or is it too much? You know, there's no, there's no stopping anybody from coming into the site if they're parking all over the town, and not just on their property.
Mm-hmm.
So that's one of my concerns, and the other one I have is the fact that if they're parking on other people's property, what's that doing to other people's businesses, where Treehouse people are parking on their site and not being able to allow their people to park on, to go to their restaurants, or bakeries, or other institutions? So I don't know what the number is, I don't know if you have it, Alex, as far as the occupancy number in there, I mean, is there, is there a safety concern with too many people in the building, where they need all this additional parking, you know? So I don't, I don't think there's any, like, I mean, like a restaurant, you'd go to get a reservation and come to the restaurant for a two-hour dinner or something, but at this location, you're never coming in at a particular time, you're coming in all, all hours of the day, all hours of the night, and there's no stopping anybody from coming in. So I know parking is an issue, not just there, but every other business in town that's, that has a site, that, for, that they want their customers to come to, and, and I've seen people parking on other sites, so that's an issue I have, you know, and, you know, I'm not in, I'm not in, I'll say this publicly, I'm not in favor of allowing that parking over there if it's gonna cause an issue safety-wise for people crossing the street from this, from Treehouse, and I've seen them not using the crosswalk that they should've at the light or something, they're just crossing right at whenever they want to on thirty-eight, and I think it's a safety concern, God forbid somebody ever got injured, hit, hit by a car crossing that street, and I would be, you know, not too well as a planning board member if I let that happen, at our due diligence as far as a safety concern and issue at this site, and, you know, I know it's, it's a big site, people come from all over to visit it, but, you know, this is Tewksbury, and we wanna make sure our residents are protected from that happening and not overcrowded, you know, there's no stoppage there, there's no, there's no stopping anybody from coming in, not that I know of, unless I'm not aware of something, so I just think that safety at the site and the excess parking that's going on now is just, it's just not in the good favor for the other, other residents in town and the other businesses in town, so, so I have a problem with, with the parking issue there, and I don't know if that's gonna resolve it or not, but, so where are we with numbers as far as parking that you wanna propose there, or what, what's allowed?
So I...
On the new site?
Yeah, I can't, I can't speak to the new site, right? So the, the operations of the new, the new, the operations of the building, right, at eighteen-eighty Main Street, which is where the brewery is and the golf course, I can't speak to that, that wasn't part of this application, but we can't get information for you, right?
Yeah.
So what we'll do is, we will circle back with Treehouse to try to get you the information that you've requested, but it, it does lead to the reason why we've been really trying to work this through, so the impact of the one remaining technical comment that we have from D.P.W. would be basically cutting the parking lot in half, going from somewhere about one-hundred-and-thirty-eight to about sixty spaces, and they have a sense that they need more, right? And you've seen it with your own eyes there, right? So there's not many spaces available, people will be parking out and around the area, and the intent of this is to provide that kind of backup parking so that that doesn't happen. And again, you know, we're, we're working with a traffic consultant, we, we're working with D.O.T., if we can get past this one comment, to make sure that the access that we provide from the parking lot over to Treehouse is, is safe as it can be.
I mean, I don't wanna lay that on you guys tonight, 'cause no one from Treehouse is here, to, to, to resolve some of the questions I have, so, so I said it, so I said it tonight to you, to relate to them.
Yes.
My concerns as a planning board member and a resident of the community as well, you know, so I won't say any more than that, but other than the fact that I just think it's gotta be addressed somehow, some way by Treehouse. I brought up to them at a previous meeting about maybe doing a shuttle service to alleviate some of the parking. some of the parking. But that was, that fell on deaf ears, but, so, I'll say it, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
All right. So, I mean, you know, I appreciate Mr. Fattali's, you know, concerns. They're real, obviously. There are a lot of people there. It does put everybody in a little bit of a situation because, you know, the reason for that is because the business is successful. I mean, the alternative at this point would be to hope the business becomes less successful so there'll be less cars there. That seems counterproductive to dismiss the idea of finding a way to deal with a problem. Those cars are coming right now, people are coming because they want to go there. What's going on on other sites, I don't know. I can't, we don't have any control over that, obviously. That's some, somebody else to deal with. But if that's happening, that's not really helpful to those other businesses. So this site might do that. I mean, I know, like Mr. Fattali said, people crossing, I think part of that is, in your brain, you cross a cross. For whatever reason, the crosswalk there runs from the other corner, kitty-cornered across, like an X coming across the middle of the intersection. I don't think in a lot of people's brains that makes sense. I believe the plan for this would be to actually have a crosswalk goal from where the parking lot is, across the shortest distance to the sidewalk, which would seem to be safer than the current version. But, you know, whether we get there or not, I don't know. But, you know, that's, that's, this is sort of the push and the pull that you've got going on here. If this doesn't work, I don't know what happens. If this does work, then we'll see, but, you know, we have more work to do on it, I think, for sure. But, you know, I'm not, you know, against it out of hand at this point. So we'll see where we at, you know, where we are when you guys get a little further in your battle back and forth on, you know, what exactly you can get on the site or not and then what does or doesn't work after that. We can come back here and we'll continue to go from where we were before. But the reason we had you guys come in is because we just don't want to go as long as we've been going without some kind of an update. If the update is simply we're still working on it, that's fine, but everybody sees this on our agenda.
Yeah.
And then we get here and we kick it and then there's nothing. So, you know, we'll pretty much probably look at it the same way. You know, we may, you know, we can continue this for a couple of meetings if that's what it takes. After that, we're going to probably want to know what's going on with, you know, some specific, you know, specificity of, you know, what are we looking at? Because we don't want these to just linger on the agenda forever.
Yeah.
So, all right. With that, I'll open up to the audience. Anyone in the audience with any questions, comments, or concerns? Do you state your name and your address? The floor is yours.
Thank you. Donna Robitaille, 527 Shoshine Street. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I did come to the last meeting and I was able to say how strongly I feel and I have continued feelings about this being a poor idea. I tried to do as much research as I can without, you know, like trying to understand how could they even ask? I understand through being able to, because we're such a great town, ask our town officials, the planning department, you know, what does it mean? Well, within our zoning criteria, they can request remote parking. We've recently done that within 500 feet. And I agree with the planning board member that said it'd be ideal if it was a button. And I understand this is within that. But I just want, and I know that you guys all know this, it's, one of the things that made me feel good when I researched was, we're just thinking, I heard it right, was that it's not absolute. It has to, you know, it's contextual zoning, so what, where, you know, what, things you guys know that I really wasn't even sure what some of the words meant. So I feel better that it's just not a given. I also didn't understand that this was just the review and there'll still be a public hearing and we'll be able to come and talk, I think, right, to get the permit?
This is the public hearing.
Oh, this isn't site plan review?
Well, but that is, and the reason you're even able to speak is because this is a public hearing.
But that isn't for the actual permit, right? They'll be coming back to get a permit, a site plan permit?
This is all...
Oh, this is it?
This is all part of that.
Thank you.
So each of the meetings that they have in front of us are part of that.
So that is why I'm overly concerned then. I appreciate, I don't want, want to bring up conservation at a planning board meeting, but since the, well, the applicants aren't here, so that's why I'm a little nervous again, falling apart a little because it's kind of gets me angry that there's no way to speak to the Treehouse. So the proper way, I mean, it's their right to not talk to residents if they try to reach out to them. I don't feel like we should have to write letters to the planning board to get to them. I know that's our, you know, we can do that. There's no forum that we can ask for with the Treehouse because they won't, you know, I don't know, at least speaking for myself, you know, you can't really call the Treehouse. Owners are representatives. So as far as working things out, it's not like I need to talk to them, but I don't really feel comfortable, like, coming here and saying how, which I'm not saying, to the people that are at the Treehouse. It kind of feels unfair. And I guess those concerns would be, and I'm going to say it anyways, and when you look at their, you know, I don't want, one of the previous speakers, Father Racket, brought up Charlton, where they, where they are also. That's their history, they own it. And even when they say hello Tewksbury in their own advertisement, and there's a lengthy thing, it's a nice, you know, a nice introduction. They acknowledge their mistakes, which, you know, we wouldn't even know about maybe, or they apologize. And as far as I'm concerned, I'm not really saying it how I mean it, I don't want to sound fresh, but I want to say if the Treehouse was here, you know, you acknowledge, you apologize, and you repeat. Because I feel this is a repeat. They've got everything they asked for and they deserved it. They're a great company, they already knew they were successful. So their growth, it isn't up to us to manage their growth or what they already have. I don't feel. I feel they took, and they had the right to, they bought a beautiful property. I think they would have built a building as beautiful according to their, you know, if you see their history and what they, what they do at all their sites, how beautiful they are and how successful. They have a following, but they took a, you know, I don't want to be acting like this like I'm in my house, but they have, they had a low-key hair salon turned into a high-volume retail store. That's what I mean by they got everything they wanted. They, you know, they took over the, a nice property, they got their permits, they got, and now they, thank goodness, our planning board, I don't think it's done throughout the Commonwealth, some pretty strict traffic studies for the next year and a half on what they already got. So I'm not thinking that, you know, we're not well-protected by our boards, by our town officials. So, and I guess another thing is, if it's, if they're just, you know, stuck on the stormwater and conservation, maybe all this would be, you know, wouldn't even be being discussed. But when, when I watched the conservation meeting and it was suggested maybe cutting the parking down, I mean, I just want to clarify right now, excuse me, did, did I just hear it wouldn't be 100 and something, it would be 60 something? Because, I mean, I thought I heard the Treehouse representative say that wouldn't be something they could...
I think that's unresolved because they're still working on whose version of the stormwater reading is correct, whether it's the petitioners or...
I understand. Okay. So I don't want to interrupt that, you know, go on and on and get emotional, but my understanding from watching the conservation, I want to bring it up at planning board, but I think it affects everybody, is that, you know, and I think the applicant themselves said to the planning board, when you brought up the stormwater letter, "We feel comfortable with what we told you." They said that to conservation and maybe that is the discussion, and maybe their people, you know, are going to do something with the DEP to make this work out better. But I've never heard in a long, you know, a long time that I was involved, over a decade, times I was, you know, just maybe paying attention and, and just the DEP never, they gave an easy no. That was the exact words. Okay? So fortunately, some, you know, they're all working together. That's a good thing. But I only know them to give hard yeses. You know, like, you're not, never denied practically.
The only thing, the only thing I'll say though is, we're going off into an area that's not...
Okay, but they, they're the ones that did it. I'll say one last thing and I'm sorry.
Right, but the more we talk about them, the more we crisscross.
May I just say that last thing about the conservation, though, is that, okay?
I would prefer you didn't, only because they have to make their decisions and their decisions aren't influenced by us any more than ours or by them.
Yes, sir.
Except for we can make a decision once they...
But I just feel bad that we're at the planning board talking about conservation. I shouldn't be because I wanted to talk about use.
But we're not...
I want to talk about the DOT and you saying...
I'm saying at this point, I don't want to talk anymore about the conservation portion of this.
Okay, thank you.
That's for the conservation meeting.
Yes, sir.
Okay. So if you have something else that pertains to what we do, that's fine.
Okay.
But I don't want to talk about them anymore because there's a forum for that and they're it, not us.
Yes, sir. Okay. So as far as the parking, remote parking, the other thing is, and I'm not correcting you and I agree that the DOT looks at this. They don't, I don't think they look at use. They don't look at someone's going to be hitting that button in the traffic flow. And so I just want to say that this is our main street, it's their road, and that we grew a lot, you know, 30 years ago, we grew great, such a great town, then another 10 years and everybody waited, the residents waited, everybody for lights, for everything. Finally, all the hard work that you guys and everybody's been doing the last decade and the funding that came and everybody working, we have all these things that we've been waiting for and got. And I don't think there's anything that the Treehouse applicant having a parking lot across the street can do for that corner, anyone that knows that corner, including people in the state that knows that corner, you know, to think that this would, this idea is going to be working because whoever goes in there is going to have to do something, perhaps what you're talking about, make it make more sense, put some money in. They're going to have to do that, including the wetland site, whoever goes over there. So for them to say, like, we're going to do all these improvements, anyone going over there. So I just think it's all about impact. And I'm sorry I brought up conservation, I got nervous because they did and I just don't think it's something that, I mean, I shouldn't have did that. But I feel strongly about the DOT, I know you guys aren't going to invite them here, but as a resident, I'm reaching out to them and I, I'm waiting for the day they call me back because I want to ask them, how do you think this is a good idea when it gets to your desk in Worcester or wherever it is after all this gets approved? And they give their, and the sad thing is, all this hard work, I don't know, because I'm just, I don't even know if I'm right, but town engineers, everybody that's doing all this work now, including the state that puts the input, is going to make sure the reasonable improvements are going to be made and paid for by the Treehouse. You know, are they talking about how many, that 100 and something cars or 60 even are going to turn pedestrians? I'm sorry that I flipped out, but...
Oh, it's fine.
I think it's a very bad idea and I hope that, and one last thing, you did say, sir, that, Mr. Chairman, that, and I know that all, all of you can approve for different reasons, and there's a lot of good reasons to approve almost anything here. We are not, we're a friendly town, but we're a tough town too, right? We do, we've done so many great things and it all come out so good. But there's nothing wrong with four people agreeing to deny for the, for one reason. Also, I hope so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Questions, comments, or concerns? All right. Right back to the board. What is the pleasure of the board?
Make your motion, Mr. Chairman. Will we continue?
All right. So I've got 7:25 on the 30th. So we've got a motion made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, motion carries. All right, so you guys, let us know.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item H, which is 1438 Main Street. This is continued from our 9:25 meeting as well.
Jim Hanley, Civil Design Consultants. So what I'd like to do is kind of give you an update as to where things stand. So August 21st was our initial meeting and you recall that we had comments from the butters, we had comments from the HOA, we had comments from the butter who's located directly to the top of the page, which I think is the north, how it's oriented there. We also had some conservation issues that we had to work through. So after we met with you, we met with conservation. There is an outstanding superseding order of conditions on the property and that slowed us up a little bit. We, Conservation reached out to DEP. DEP has asked that we submit a request for a certificate of compliance and that goes with the, with an as-built in a letter. We did do that last week. It's specific to our lot on 1438 Main. We submitted that to them last week. We modified our plans, I believe it was September 25th, and those plans were revised to address the comments that we received at the planning board meeting, the technical review from DPW as well as the review from the planner. The substantive changes are that we reduced the parking, the proposed additional parking from 14 to 12 spaces to address some of the comments that we heard. We also increased the length of the parallel spaces along the long run, which again was to address comments that we heard from the board specifically. We also had some comments relative to a short 18-inch-high retaining wall that was along the long stretch of parallel parking. That has been removed and we've graded that out. We're also showing that we're going to likely impact the existing arborvitae that are along the property line. We went out, we surveyed each tree and we're proposing to remove those trees and replant arborvitae so that we make sure that we do not have any negative impact on the butter to the north. At this point, we believe we have addressed all DPW's comments. Again, we submitted on the 25th. I don't think I've seen anything come through beyond that. What I can also tell you, and I'm not the attorney for the project, Don Bernstein is, unfortunately he wasn't able to make it. He has had significant discussions with the HOA. I believe there's an agreement in principle between the two parties. And we'd prefer to have that agreement finalized before we continue with the technical review of these minor modifications that are in front of you. But with that said, any questions that I can?
All right. We'll start with Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In looking through this, I think there were two, two primary concerns that I had, one of which sounds like it's being addressed between Attorney Bernstein and the HOA, which is basically snow removal, additional burdens of...
Yes.
Of the space and the use being put on the homeowners for maintenance and costs. So I'll table those concerns until we see what the result is and we may or may not hear more about that tonight, it looks like. So one of the main concerns I had was the dimensional requirements or the dimensional layouts of the parallel parking with the two-way drive lane and the idea that someone would have to come in and would either park head-on facing the wrong direction or traverse throughout the site to come back and get a space and the potential that if they're pulling up to that front space and then someone else is turning in. So has, have there been any substantial changes to that parallel parking? I didn't see anything.
So substantial is subjective, but we have removed two spaces, I believe it's two spaces along that long run. We've pulled the closest space further away from Main Street, which we thought was a very good comment. And then we've increased the length. I believe the length required was 20 and we're 23 and a half. The other thing we've agreed to do is sign each of those spaces so that they will be, they'll be specific to the people that work in the building as opposed to the patients that come in. The idea with that is that there's a lot of discussion about, do people have the skills anymore to parallel park? And that's a reasonable discussion. The people that do it more often will be better at it. And now we've added two feet to the, to the length of the, of the, beyond what zoning is required, to the length of the actual stalls. So we heard those comments and we tried to, to address as much as we could with the space that we have.
Okay. And what about the overall width of the drive lanes and the parking? The parking spaces themselves were eight feet wide last time. I believe that's what it still shows.
Yes, it is, but we also moved it further into the slope to get it further away from the road. Just need a, just a minute. Right, so previously, this was up against the edge of pavement, right? So there's the edge of pavement that runs parallel with the road, obviously, it's the edge. And then there's the actual easement, which is more or less two feet into the landscaped area that runs parallel. What we did is we moved the parking space so that it begins at the easement, so in essence, we've created like two more feet of width for that parking space. So now we have the legal... So now we have the legal space within the easement, but it's two feet further away from the edge of pavement. So in essence, we've increased it by two feet.
Sounds like you've made some reasonable attempts to address a lot of my previous concerns. So I have nothing else at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Fratelli. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So Mr. Hanley, you mentioned about those spots being designated for employees, correct?
Yep.
How do you police something like that?
So I think the, the owner of the building will have to police it, right? So what we're proposing, what we're showing on our site plan is that, that's where, we're showing nine signs along those parallel spaces that will read employee parking, right? It's really going to come down to the person that owns the building to direct his employees or her employees to park in that space so that they leave the spaces closer to the, to the front door for the people to pay a month, right?
Okay. So I know that property has been vacant for a long time. The new owner just moved in, I'm not sure how many months ago, or?
Yeah, yeah, he's in, I know that, yeah.
So I guess my question to you, to him through you, I guess, would be, if he knows this particular business entity needs X number of spots, and it's going to be an issue, you know, why would the owner bring this new applicant in to rent this place, knowing he's going to have parking concerns and issues with, with the parking lot? You know, I mean, it's designated for X number of spots. You don't have too more, too many left, and now you have to go outside the actual parking area to, to increase the parking and cause a potential problem at the site. So, I mean, I don't know why he did that, or what, but now it's, again, another parking issue we have with this site and other sites in town as well, you know, so. You know, and, and people are in uproars because of the changing of the situation at the site, you know, so, but, you know, and that's, that's tough to resolve, I guess, you know, and you're trying your best, but I'm not sure if we got there yet, so. But with that, I'm also, Mr. Chairman, just.
One thing I failed to mention on that note is that Attorney Bernstein did submit a, you guys specifically asked for a justification of the additional parking. So a letter was provided, it was late last week, but we did get something in, we knew we were going to continue anyhow, but, yep.
Okay, all set.
I think too, when we last met, it was prior to it being announced who the, the new tenant was, which I think came in, out in the news shortly thereafter, so that kind of gave part of the answer as well. So, all right, Mr. Lozard.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I, I do agree that, you know, residents who, or employees who will parallel park more often will be better at it, but that also does kind of turn this from overflow parking into, you know, primary parking. It's going to be all day, every day, there'll be folks in there. I think that's, it's probably my primary concern with that. And then as far as overall, like, use of the main lot, do you guys have projections for how often you expect that to be completely full?
The, the main lot?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, so, so I defer to the letter that Attorney Bernstein put together, but basically, basically what we looked at is, we looked at how many employees, how many operatories they have there. And then there's a cycle, there's a, there's basically a 30-minute cycle, I think, is what he said, so that you need a little bit of fluff so that when people are coming in and out, there's not that jam. And that's what we're trying to plan for.
And then outside of that, I echo the same concerns, Mr. Champ, I had about snow removal, but it sounds like we might hear a little bit more about that in a bit here. So with that, no further questions from you.
Mr. Duffy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So it looks like, Mr. Hanley, that you're replacing, you're removing 30 trees and you're replacing it with 30 trees. And tell me a little bit about the saw cut, like, what, what's going on there, where, down alongside the, the proposed saw cut that, that runs along, parallel with the side of the road there, is that?
Yeah, I mean, all, all we're trying to show there is what the limit of work is. So instead of them not, instead of them trying to butt up, new pavement right up against an old edge, they cut it maybe 12 inches into that lane so that they have a nice, fresh flush pavement section to tie into.
I didn't see any kind of a spec on the, unless I'm missing it here, missing something, on the, the retaining wall that you plan on putting in there.
So the retaining wall was a, a specific comment from DPW for the first set of plans that we submitted. They asked us to remove that, so we did remove that, and it's now not part of the plan.
Oh. And I'm quite sure I wasn't aware of that. So what is going to be the, you know, what's going to be the line of demarcation between where the new arborvitae's are and the, in the new parking spaces? Because there is definitely an elevation change.
Oh, yeah, there is. So if, if you were to go to Sheet C5, you're able to see our proposed grading plan. So this is, this is a three-to-one slope from the parking lot up to the, to the property line. And that's why we believe, right, that if we were to build this without proposing the additional arborvitae's to be replaced, we'd likely undercut them, right? So there's a chance we could get some of those to, to, to stay once you get into the field conditions and you see the, the actual location there, but this is, that's just a three-to-one slope from the top curve to the property line.
What was the purpose of, of DPW eliminating the?
So I think, I, I don't want to speak on their behalf, but we had an eight-foot-wide space, and if a passenger were to get out of the car up against an 18-inch-high retaining wall, which isn't much more than a six-inch curb, but it is more, that you could be banging your door into the 18-inch retaining wall. So it was a good comment, we saw it, and we, we modified the plan accordingly.
And what's the overall elevation change from the, from the, from the butters to, to Serena Way?
Yeah, so it, it varies, obviously, but the most steep portion is the portion closest to Main Street, and that's from at the.
It looks like it's, could be about four feet from one end to the other.
Yeah, it's closer to three, but yeah, yeah. And then on the far end, it's, you know, within a foot, a foot and a half.
I mean, that, that seems like a recipe for, for, for any erosion-type issue, to me, at, at a glance here, you know?
Yeah.
Being a, you know, geotechnical engineer, but I, I understand that, I understand that you want people to be able to open their car doors, but, but, you know.
So, so we'd be very comfortable with a well-vegetated, three-to-one slope, three feet high, not having issues with erosion, and if there were to be issues, we'd have a maintenance plan, we'd be obligated to, to address it, and when we put 30 arborvitae's in there, that's only going to help to stabilize the, the slope.
So I know that you are going to have a, some kind of a written agreement with the, with the Serena Way residents, is that my understanding?
That's true.
And that's going to, that's going to encompass your snow removal issue that Mr. Lozard mentioned, and, and landscaping, and, and, and so on and so forth, so that would obviously need to be any future mitigation that may be needed with that, with that slope would also be part of the written record there?
Yes, yeah, we could do that.
Now, there's nine spaces there now in, in the, in the revised drawing. How many did we, how many did you eliminate there?
So we, we eliminated two altogether, right? We had 14, now we're down to 12, and those two came out of that location there.
Wasn't there four in the back there, in my, in the, in the back of the parking lot?
So I, I'd want to look before I comment again here, I want to make sure that I get it right. There were, there were adjustments to address the, the comments that we heard, I want to make sure I get it right.
And then while you're thinking about that, Mr. Hanley, too, are the, are the employees okay with that? I mean, they're going to have, there's going to be nothing in between Serena Way and their vehicles there, you know, so their vehicles are going to be, you know, I mean, I, I know there's a lot of side-street parking in, in many, many locations, but I, I just wonder if that has been discussed with any of your employ, any of the employees?
That I couldn't tell you.
Yeah.
It's been, the, the boss has told me that that's what he wants, so that's what we're, that's what we're trying to do.
Sure, sure.
I'm, I'm trying to look this up right now.
Okay.
I might need a minute, because the connection is slow.
Mr. Duffy, you don't have the older plans there, do you? You don't have the older plans, do you?
Mr. Hanley, one of the butters, are there any other trees coming down besides the 30 that you mentioned to do this project, to do this, to install those parking, parallel parking spaces?
So we, we conducted, after the concerns came up at the board, we specifically went there and targeted that location. So I know that there are those 30, as far as, are there anything for the other three? I don't know that to be the case, but that's further away from all the butters.
I'm not sure if that's, I think there was an abutter who had a concern that when the trees came down, that he was going to be losing a certain amount of privacy there. And I'm just wondering how that, that was addressed.
Thank you. So the, the butters comment was addressed by us going out and field locating the trees along the shared property line.
Okay.
And making the determination that we can't build that parking area without likely impacting those existing trees that are there. So what we've added to the plan is that those are going to be taken down and replaced with 30 arborvitae's. To make sure.
A little closer to your lot line, which is a little closer to his lot line.
Yeah, right, so we, normally we put that in and maybe have a two or three foot, you know, along the property, now they're going to be on the property line. So the original plan called for 11 spaces along that run, and we now have nine spaces. So we did, we did make that modification to, to reduce that down to nine. And it, it was twofold. It was longer spaces to allow people to park a little bit easier, and then it was also the comment that I thought was spot-on, which was the ones closest to Main Street could present more of a danger of a conflict backing in, backing out near the stop bar. So what we tried to do is eliminate that last one, then split the difference between the second one we removed.
Was there one more on the back there, though? As you make, after you make the corner, you know, on, on Serena Way?
Right. Ah, yeah, because I have six, I'm looking at six here, and we now have three on that one, but I can tell you the net-net is two. Mr. Duffy, I'm going to have to get back to you.
Yeah, that's okay.
We'll get back to you on that, I just, I'm looking at this kind of cold here.
I will say, I will say, Mr. Hanley, that I appreciate the effort to try to accommodate the, the butters there.
Yeah.
And, and especially with the, with the privacy concerns of the butters, and, and making them, you know, any parking spaces more, you know, I guess for lack of a better word, more practical.
Yes. So this, so this was the original. We had one revision that we addressed, Conservation kicked out a couple of wetland flags for us, so that went, we lost two there.
Okay.
So it was four, right? So, but we did take two along the long stretch.
Okay. All right, that's all I have for now, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
All right, thanks. So the, the idea of having those as employee parking, I think, is, I'm okay with that because I think that means the less in-and-outs, you know, like, more ideally, that they're going to come in in the morning, the cars are going to stay there until the day's at its end, and you're not going to have ins and outs and multiple people trying to back in and out of spaces all day long. So I think that's ideal, as well as the benefit to the abutter to not have cars constantly parking, on, you know, pulling out, parking again and whatnot, sort of just a, you know, a stagnant, you know, beginning of the day, end of the day thing. So I guess, you know, if, if they're designated, I think that's probably better. Is this, I, I don't, I have no idea, but are they open on Saturdays? Either one of them?
I, I don't know that definitively.
Okay. I mean, to me, that's, that's more ideal, obviously, because, you know, people home on the weekend, more ins and outs for the cars.
Yeah.
You know, on top of it, you know. So if they're not open on the weekend, I think that's also a plus, you know, also for the butters, but also for the residents to not have the, you know, the ins and outs of the business on Saturday as well. That's the case for both?
I'm sorry to say that.
Just step aside, just one second. When you were nodding back there, I, I asked, so that's both businesses, neither one open on Saturday, is that right?
Yeah, they're not present on Saturday.
Okay, all right, sure. Okay, so other than that, obviously, there's still a couple other things, you know, that need to be sorted out. The difference here, obviously, with that, you know, we've had other hearings where we've commented on, we're not interested in the back and forths between the groups, but this is a little bit different because this is all dealing with one road that you both use, and there are, you know, certain questions that change how we make our decision that have to be answered. That's why, in this case, we actually care what you guys end up with for an agreement for some of this, because it matters to our, you know, final decision. So obviously, we need to see where that settles out.
Yes.
With that, I'll open up to the audience. Anyone in the audience with any questions, comments, or concerns at this point? Excuse me. Yep, yeah, just give your name and address for the record.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, Bob Puff, Consulting Civil Engineer. I've been a registered professional engineer in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts for over 35 years, and I am here on behalf of the Serena Woods Condominium Association. I trust in your package, you've received two letters from me, one dated September 7th, the other one dated October 12th. The first was done in response to a prior submission, which has since been revised, so the October 12th letter is relative to the revised plans of September 25th that have been submitted by the applicant. If it's all right with the board, I can walk you through that report, sort of highlight on, or highlight the points that I'd like to make on behalf of the condominium. I'll try to be brief, because I know you're running on.
So I'll, I'll give you the time to, to go through your points, but you're speaking for, we're not going to have everybody come up and make the same comments from the condo, is that correct?
I believe that's a reasonable statement.
Okay.
My comments won't be repeated, no.
Not the same comments, but the different comments, of course.
Okay.
Okay. I guess, I, I heard the applicant's engineer make the comment about the, the certificate of compliance regarding the superseding order of conditions, so I won't spend a lot of time on that, except to ask, I assume that the planning board has been satisfied that all the permit conditions are, are in order from the original approval, that you've received an ASBIL, you've received certification from the engineer of record that the stormwater management system operates in order and all that.
I see that, I see the town planner nodding her head, so I'm going to say yes.
Okay, very good. The only request relative to that that I would make is that the association has not received the stormwater operation and maintenance plan or the long-term pollution prevention plan, which is typically provided by the, the original developer as a matter of course when the ownership's transition out. So I'd, I'd request that that, those documents be provided to the HOA for implementation. The remainder of my remarks, I guess, I'd preface by, by saying, the residents of the condo association, I think, had a certain expectation in buying their properties in that this was permitted as a mixed use originally, as I understand it. And certain design considerations were made with respect to that mixed use, and as a result, I think, in, in going into the condominium property, there's a reasonable expectation of what can, what can be looked at in the future with respect to the nature of the driveway, how it will feel, how it would feel to walk along the sidewalk. of the driveway, how it will feel, how it would feel to walk along the sidewalk, and the general amenity of the green space and landscaping. So, many of these comments that I have are relative to that expectation changing. So with respect to parking, the parking quantity has been debated, and I understand that the attorney for the applicant has provided a justification and accounting for that. And there'll be another speaker to speak to that from the association, so I won't blabber that point. And there has been a lot of conversation amongst the board relative to the parking, the parallel parking. I think you're all cognizant of the same points that I've been making relative to this and relative to the proposal that this be employee parking. I think there are two issues there, and this is not in my report, this is in response to the current comment. The first one being, it may be a minimal improvement with respect to its impact on the residents of the condominium association. What may end up happening is that the arrival of the employees coincides with the peak departure of residents of the condominium going to work. So, there may be less of a prolonged conflict, but it may be more intense. I'd just throw that on the table for consideration. The other thing is, having the future owner or management establish how the employee's going to park, that can often sound good, but often there's not easy resolution if there are problems. So, again, I'd put that on the table for your consideration. The one technical aspect that I have regarding the design of the parking lot is the access point or driveway curb cut, if you will, on the northeast corner, where, I don't know, So, speaking at this location here, if you are driving, exiting the parking lot, going in this direction out, in my opinion, this is a problematic location because of the field of vision that you need to see to be able to exit. It's, it's a difficult maneuver for a car to make a U-turn like this, but I won't deny it can probably be, be made. The problem is, in order to safely make that turn, you have to look in this direction to make sure there's no oncoming traffic. Hard over your left shoulder, across this landscaped island, and across this parking field, which presumably will be occupied by cars. Then you also have to move all the way back this way to make sure that there's no oncoming traffic from this direction. That's a difficult maneuver. It's not, in my opinion, a good design feature, and that access point really should be relocated or eliminated entirely. With respect to pedestrian access, or pedestrian circulation, the, I'm sorry, these two, these two additional curb cuts obviously reduced the amount of sidewalk that can be walked on, and it, you know, could potentially increase the amount of conflict between pedestrians and vehicles entering and exiting in the parking lot. The other issue is, this stretch of sidewalk right here, in the existing condition and in the approved plan, it was a grassed buffer zone adjacent to that sidewalk, separating it from the parking lot. Without that, if someone were on the sidewalk, they're basically sandwiched between the access drive and the parking space. So, if someone were to pull in to the parking space, carelessly, shall we say, to the point where their wheels hit the curb line and their nose extends over into the sidewalk, two, two and a half, three feet, they basically occupied the majority of the sidewalk and left the pedestrian nowhere to go, except into the driveway. So I think that the parking lot should be reconfigured so that a grassed buffer can be provided at that location, similar to the existing condition. The, the issues relative to the cost of snow removal, it sounds like they're being addressed in an ongoing fashion, so I'll, I'll leave that be. I will speak to the waiver regarding snow, area of snow removal. And in my opinion, that's largely self-imposed. The applicant is requesting a parking count that's well in excess of your zoning requirement. One space of 200 square feet gives you 43 spaces. The request is for 61, that's well over what you need under zoning. The parking is dictated by the use, fair enough. But if the use required parking that was in compliance with the zoning, or for that matter, in compliance with the existing approval, there would be adequate removal, adequate snow storage, and this waiver wouldn't be required. I have a few drainage comments, and I guess I'll, I'll make them simple, rather than bore you with a lot of engineering jargon. The original approval had the parking lot closed here, and there's, there's a catch basin right in the corner of it. That, everything drained to it, and it created basically a trap, a pond, where all the water went. With these new curb cuts, the parking lot slopes down onto the access driveway. These trench drains are supposed to intercept that water. And for small storms, they will. The issue becomes the capacity of the, of the grate, what you see on the surface, what the water can get into to get into the system. And what the concern is, is that the stormwater runoff goes where it's supposed to go. All of the, all of the parking lot stormwater is supposed to go to an infiltration system under the parking lot. If any of the parking lot runoff goes by those trenches, it goes into Serena Way and into a different drainage system. So the mitigation that the calculations presume to happen don't happen. At least, they don't happen to the level that the calculations reflect. So, what I'm asking for is some calculations on the grate capacities and the piping system capacities to make sure that all of the parking lot runoff stays in the parking lot. And I'm asking them to be done for a 100-year storm, not the 10 or the 25-year storm, which is normal stormwater, I should say, normal drainage methodology. And the reason I'm asking them for the 100-year storm is because that's what the stormwater management system is designed for, I presume. If the 100-year storm doesn't get captured by the, by the grates and the catch basins, it goes into Serena Way, and the calculations for the bigger storms are, are not necessarily The, the new parking along the driveway also adds drainage to the Serena Way catch basins, those catch basins located down here, flowing into the infiltration, the stormwater basin here. So, the additional runoff that goes to those basins, there should be some confirmation via calculation that surface flooding and the piping of those systems are adequate to accommodate that drainage, that additional drainage, and that the stormwater basin will still function as intended to mitigate that additional runoff. Lastly, on drainage, my comments regarding the stormwater, the stormwater treatment devices. And this is largely a mechanics thing, but I've noted in my report some insufficiencies in the way the piping and the units are laid out, that they don't satisfy the manufacturer's requirements. And if they don't satisfy the manufacturer's requirements, it's either, one, incapable of being built, or it won't provide the treatment that we're assuming that's going to happen. So that issue should get addressed. Lastly, and just regarding maintenance, and again, I know, I know this is a, an ongoing discussion, but I guess I would just in closing encourage the, the planning board to ensure that there's appropriate and suitable and agreeable resolution to how this easement needs to change. The easement, easement and the easement agreements, I presume, were generated initially as part of the original site plan special permit applications. Without those easements and easement agreements, I don't know that condominium would have had an access off of Main Street, and without that, I wouldn't have gotten approval. So, I think it's only fair that the planning board provides some assurance that everybody is satisfied in how these easement agreements are revised and, and resolved. With that, I'll close unless there are any questions or clarifications you'd like of me at this point.
You're there? Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else with any questions, comments, or concerns?
Mr. Chairman, distinguished members of the committee. I'll be quick, you know. Thanks for the opportunity to speak here. Just a quick update, you know, there has been conversations with the attorney, Mr. Bordenstein, about the maintenance responsibilities, yes. The applicant is willing to take ownership of maintaining his property, the landscape area converted into the parking space, yes. But in exchange to that, we have been asked not to show up here. Let go of our civil rights. Support the design in its existing phase with, even if there are any technical concerns and issues with that. We're still here because we believe in the system, we believe in you, to take decisions in the best interests of everybody. With that, I just want to quickly, want one of the questions that you had about, what's the actual need for the parking spaces here? That was your question in the initial public hearing on August 21st, right? So I see that, in response to that, the attorney has written up a memo and filed it with the planning committee. So basically, that memo says that, you know, there are about 15 operatories and 15 patients are going to be there at all given times. And with those 15 patients, there'll be 15 staff. In addition to that, there's, there are going to be another additional supporting staff, a total of 38 parking spaces just for the dental office. And there's another additional need of 15 parking spaces, which is a total of 53 is the requirement. That answers your question from the initial public hearing, was what's the actual need? 53, which is four more than what's currently available, which is 49. And the application here is basically, they're asking for 14 more than what's existing, right? No? Which is 49 plus 14 is 63, right? Now, this is with the understanding that there are 15 operatories in that dental office. Thanks to the planning committee this morning, they were able to provide us with the floor plan. The floor plan clearly shows that there are only 10 operatories and not 15. So, I don't know if it was a mistake, or if it's misrepresentation of facts to a government agency, a town, I don't know that. But anyway, adjusting the numbers, the total parking requirement is 44, not 53. Now, 44 is already, they have five more in excess of 44, which is 49. And the justification provided in the memo by the attorney is, they need patient overlap parking, which is 14 patient overlap parking. If you go by these numbers here, you know, they already have five additional patient overlap parking, which is five more than the 44 that they actually need, but they need more here, right? So, I'd like to provide the committee with a copy of this memo that we have written.
Thank you.
So, the question that I have is, what's more important? The additional parking, patient overlapping parking of 14 spaces, or snow storage area? As you, as you can see on this, this very limited snow storage area. So that's, it's a big concern. So I don't know which is more important. I'm looking at Mr. Jonathan from DBW to tell us what's more important, the snow storage area or having additional parking, which is nice to have, but snow storage area is a must-have, got to have, right? So that's my concern, snow storage area. And because the, the applicant has also filed a waiver for snow removal, trucking the snow off-site. Now, I don't know how it would be feasible, so what happens on a Saturday or Sunday where the businesses are not in operation? So the residential community now relying on the applicant to remove the snow on a Saturday night or a Sunday night, which is not going to happen because until Monday morning, they don't care, right? So those are some of the concerns that we have, right? So those concerns have not been addressed. Now, we filed our concerns with the plan on August 21st, September 7th, October 12th, and here we have the revised plan. The only difference in the revised plan is two parking spaces less on that panel space. That doesn't even meet what you had suggested back in the initial hearing on August 21st. You had asked to remove the first three. For safety reasons, you had asked to remove the first three, but only two have gone. Everything else remains in the plan. And big concern is the snow storage area, as you can see over here. Very limited snow storage area. Why can't we just get rid of these three parking spaces, which are so close to the conservation area, it's very much sitting within the buffer zone, the protected conservation area, and use that space as a snow storage area? Instead of having, you know, what have you got right now, 12? Can let go of those three, use it as snow storage? Just a suggestion. I mean, we, we can keep talking about this, and we can keep sharing our concerns, we had our engineer present it as well, you know, we can keep coming back here again, irrespective of whatever condition the attorney has put in front of us, not to show up here just to own the maintenance responsibilities. But ultimately, if there's not going to be any action to the technical concerns that we have provided in the report, not once, twice, but thrice, there's no point. You know, all these people are here today because they believe in the system, they believe in, in the committee and the expertise of the committee to do the right thing. With that, thank you very much.
Okay. Anyone else with any questions, comments, or concerns?
Did you not say your name and address as well? Excuse me. You didn't say your name and address as well before you said your name.
Your name and address.
Absolutely. My name is Arafat Khan, I represent Serena Woods. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Frank Corenti at 85 Serena Way. Okay? Just to brief, when we bought our home there six years ago, six and a half years ago, we were aware of the roadway easement and the joint residential commercial use of that roadway. And actually, it's been pretty good for six years. The only problems I've had is occasionally, people come out of that parking lot and don't stop. I've had to hit my brakes pretty good because I'm coming off of Main Street, sometimes cutting in front of traffic, so I'm doing 20 miles an hour sometime, and a car will come out. But that's only happened maybe five, six times to me. Now, the applicant's looking to encroach on the roadway easement in order to add parking, peril to the road, and off in the corner here, and we'll talk about that. There's a 90-degree turn here. One of the tightest roadway turns I've ever driven on. If there's cars coming in opposite directions into that curve, invariably, one of the cars has to stop to let the other go, okay? That's how tight the turn is. To make that worse, now with the proposal, here's the turn. To make that worse, now with the proposal, here's the turn. They're putting an entrance and egress pathway cutting into the parking lot. They're parking two to three cars, I'm confused on how many they want here, I think it's three, and a snow accumulation area. Well, ladies and gentlemen, that's an accident waiting to happen, okay? I mean, it just, I don't know. Serena Way essentially is going to become a roadway through a parking lot. You have children walking to get to their school bus, and we have three already in elementary schools, I believe, walking through a parking lot with egress and access on three different locations to the main parking lot, plus now in that corner. And if there's two cars going by with this narrow sidewalk, good luck, you know? I really don't believe that this planning board's intention was to have this kind of a condition and actually approve it on the initial application seven years ago. It just doesn't make sense. It's not safe, it's congested. That's my comments, folks.
Danny Kim, 1428 Main Street. I'd like to start by also thanking the board members for giving us the opportunity to contribute to this matter once again. Tonight, I will just be reading the letter my father composed in his place. Chair Johnson and planning board members, I am writing to formally express deep concerns and opposition regarding the planned expansion of the parking lot by the Dental Association at 1438 Main Street Tewksbury. I am Sung Seol Kim residing at 1428 Main Street. As 2601876, our property shares an extensive boundary line with 1438 Main Street. The proposed expansion of the parking lot and the consequent removal of trees threaten not only to erode the natural beauty of our neighborhood, but also raise several environmental and safety concerns. Anticipated issues include increased noise and air pollution due to vehicular movements, heightened risk of accidents from increased traffic, and added complexity in infrastructure management. Furthermore, the trees currently serve as a natural buffer, ensuring our privacy, and their removal will expose our homes, potentially leading to privacy infringements. I previously submitted a letter to the committee highlighting these primary concerns during the last planning board meeting. Today, I wish to bring to your attention additional observations made subsequently. Number one, fire hazard. One of the most distressing concerns is the risk of fire. Should nine parallel parking spaces be constructed along our property boundary, it is likely to lead to an increase in litter, particularly cigarette butts, heightening the risk of fire outbreaks. Who bears the responsibility in the event of such a fire? Number two, parking space utilization. Post the last planning board meeting, I took the initiative to ascertain the extent of the shortage of parking spaces. I observed the parking lot over two months, twice a week, particularly on Tuesdays and Wednesdays, between 1:00 PM and 4:30 PM, when both offices in the building are operational and the demand for parking should be at its peak. Contrary to expectations, I consistently found 11 to 14 vacant parking spaces, even on the busiest, busiest days. Despite the availability of an average of 12 to 13 spaces, the applicant is pushing for this expansion, disregarding the safety of neighboring residents. I have attached photographs for your reference. Number three, comparative analysis. While it may not be a direct comparison, it is noteworthy that the commercial building opposite to our residence, Germano Park, accommodates 19 businesses but maintains 50 parking spaces, just one more than the dental office's current 49. This observation underscores that the applicant's existing parking is far from inadequate. These observations over two months have been diligently recorded and presented. We contend that the applicant's proposed expansion project poses a threat to the safety of neighboring residents and is in several aspects incongruent with the surrounding conditions. We earnestly implore the planning committee members not to disregard the concerns shared by many in our community. We are sincerely grateful to the committee for considering our observations. Thank you for your attention to this matter.
All right, someone else had the hand, was it, okay, so you're, or else?
Good evening. My name is Donna Landry, and I live at 25 Serena Way. And I just want to express my concern for the parking spaces, that, the parallel parking spaces, where people are going to pull into that parking space, and then they're going to pull out and come into Serena Way to turn around to get back out. When we bought, and we still continue to love living there because it's quiet, it's private, but I'm very concerned that these people are going to just start turning around in our area. That's just my biggest concern, and I just wanted it to be noted. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else? I don't know if I saw another hand up. Going once, going twice, all right. Bring it back to the board. So one of the comments that came up just now, just out of curiosity, because I'm not sure, because I forget exactly where, who has control of what exactly here, but that corner that you're, that's been referenced a couple of times, can a stop line be put in there?
Could be, I don't think it's warranted. So a stop, so, so you're saying at the hard right?
When, when a car's coming in, making the hard right, the one the, the HOA's engineer pointed out that, you know, you're going to make the hard look over your shoulder, look to the cars. If the cars came around that corner, had to stop, that alleviates a lot of that concern because if you're coming out, if that car's coming, you didn't quite see, it still has to stop, even if you didn't quite see it where it's starting to come in, that alleviates the likelihood that that car pulling out is going to meet way too close with a neighbor. So that's something I would, I would, you know, depending on where we go with this, but that's something I'd like to see looked at because, I mean, it's a reasonable concern that a car coming in, you know, is going to make that turn, and maybe the car coming out of the lot isn't going to see it, or, you know, they won't see each other, or whatever you want to call it. I don't, I don't think that's an unreasonable, you know, and there's certainly more than enough space between the time you come in the, in the driveway to that, if, you know, if a few cars have to stop, it's not like it's going to back out onto Main Street. You're only talking about the people who live in the back, and that's, you know, they're not coming in at the same time. So I'd like, I'd like to see that looked at, to see if that, you know, is feasible. Also, this, this comment of the actual floor plan, you know, if we could get some clarification as to what the actual floor plan is?
Yeah, I'm, so I don't have the floor plan.
Because if it turns out that the numbers that are submitted aren't accurate because those aren't the actual floor plans, it's going to be a little irritating.
Yeah. I don't have a floor plan.
And I'm not saying you do, I'm just saying.
No, I, I get it, right.
That's one that I'm going to.
So I don't know if that's the current one, or where that stands, and we didn't.
And neither do I, and that's why I want some clarification.
Absolutely.
If it's, if what, the numbers that were submitted in the, from one side is accurate, not the other, then we'll figure it out from there, but, you know, that, that's, that does make a difference. You know, I, I mean, obviously, we've got, we've gotten a lot of comments, there's a lot of concern about the number of spaces. You know, and depending on who's, you know, which, which part of it you're looking at, you know, what's, what's the, you know, where's the real absolute, you know, got-to-habit number, for one? But also, if you have to give something up, where is it? Is it, is it the parallel spots? Is it the ones where the snow storage could go? You know, I, there are reasonable comments being made, you know, do you need those three in the back? But, you know, that's a long way away from the, you know, the office kind of thing. Now, did you, you didn't intend on those being employee as well, did you?
No.
No. Okay. Okay.
So, so we understand that concern, right? And Dr. Nahara understands that concern, but he certainly doesn't want to build infrastructure that he doesn't know he's going to need. So there's the new use that's in the building, there's a use today, or an intensity today, and he believes that over the course of time, like some of the applications we've talked about, there's going to be a greater demand, right? So that's why we're here. This is, this is a really involved, expensive, long, arduous effort for 12 parking spaces, but he feels that strongly, right? So we had that conversation with him prior to, this is not an easy, you know, process to go through, so.
Well, I mean, you, I mean, you have to understand, you know, opposition as well, which is, you know, you got a room full of folks who have their concerns as well, so, you know, you know, I'm, I'm the least likely person to, you know, to give absolutes in terms of no's if I can avoid it. I like to find ways to get to yes. But, you know, that also means that I'm not necessarily okay with absolute yes, you know? So that's why I'm asking, you know, that, that, those calculations are going to matter. You know, a hard look of, you know, I know he wants 12, he thinks he needs 12, I'm not disagreeing one way or the other with that point right now, but, you know, we're going to have at least two weeks before we, we come back here again, is whether or not, you know, between you, you guys have your own conversations, and whether or not, you know, there's any change to that feeling? I mean, if there isn't, there isn't.
Sure.
You know? But obviously, there's a few things to look at between now and then, there's no reason not to look at that as well. If the answer doesn't change, then the answer doesn't change, and then we just have to make a decision.
So, so sometimes what the board's done in the past is that if there is, like, in the case of a parking waiver, we'd show it as potential or constructed if needed kind of thing. I don't even know if this is an option, right? But is that something that you guys would consider so that we don't go out, we don't want to, certainly no one wants to build anything that's not needed, but the alternative to that is congestion, right? Which.
Well, like I said, I'm going to go around to everybody else too, but, you know, since we're, since I started this, if that's, if that's a consideration, then I'd also, to me, one of those things would be discussing at this point what that, what that phasing in would look like. Where do you stop? Which ones?
Yeah.
You know, is it those ones in the back? Is it the parallel? Is it the other way around? Is it stop at some here, go there, come back? So that's, I think, going to be a question because, you know, obviously, I think for most of the comments, a lot of the concern is on the parallel spots. I don't know if, I'm not sure if I'm clear as to if that's the primary concern. I'd rather have snow storage if it's one or the other than parallel or vice versa, I had no idea. But, you know, if we're going to have that conversation, then I think it can't just be all the spaces are reserved to be put in at some point without some ideas how that will happen. Because I think that's important, you know, if, if, if that's going to happen, where does it start? Where does it go from there?
Right. And Ian, it's super challenging when we only have 12 parking spaces, right? Do we build four, and then five, and, right?
Like I said, and again, that's not.
So I'm not sure, it's, it's a realistic ask, I just wanted to throw it out on the table.
Okay. All right. So I'll run around, Mr. Champ.
I'd really like to see what the resolution is between the attorney and the homeowners' association, and see what kind of agreement they come to, and if there's some common ground. Right now, I'm not seeing any resident support for this, and that's, that's not something that I feel is neighborly. So that's my concern. I want to see what that resolution is, and whether or not there can be some common ground there.
Yeah, I think just, I think if we're going to talk about phasing some of these spots in, just kind of getting a better understanding of current usage of the parking space, some of the resident comments here were saying that, you know, there's 10 to 14 vacant spots in the middle of the afternoon where you wouldn't necessarily expect that, also the number of operatories actually in, in the office here. So just getting a clearer picture on that, and seeing what the actual utilization of this space is before we look to add, you know, additional spaces outside of the primary lot.
Mr. Duffy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So Mr. Hanley, to echo my colleagues, some of, some of their concerns here, you know, I mean, I think, I think the, the abuddies have, you know, you know, several legitimate concerns there. Where, I know, I know the resident, the Serena Way folks' engineering is requesting information for, as far as as-built and, and stormwater operations and maintenance plans, and long-term pollution prevention, and so on and so forth, are those documents, like, available for their review?
Yes, yes.
And have they been, have, have, have you, have you guys been forthcoming? So they don't have them? Are they entitled to them? My guess is, is the question.
So I, what I can tell you is that we did the design, I think it was 2014, and in that design, we provided, and the town approved, an operations and maintenance plan specific to stormwater, right? And so after that, I, like, I'm not involved in the.
So is that something that the town needs to provide?
Yeah, certainly, it's public record, and it should have been provided to the HOA, you know, as part of the sale of the units. I, I can't speak to it though, because I, I wasn't involved in it. But I did provide it.
So your group, that's working for the, for the ownership, is, doesn't feel like that they need to be really, that they need to be the ones to go gather that information for?
So, so.
Or point them in the right direction?
Yeah, yeah, no, I mean, I can send it to Alex this week, I can look into it and find that information and provide it to him, yeah. I have no problem with it.
And, and, you know, and as far as the chairman's comment too, you know, with the three parking spaces in the back, I mean, they are really outliers in that whole design there, and, and it's a legitimate concern. People, especially after the summer, they, they want to know where the water's going to go, Mr. Hanley, you know?
Yeah, I get it.
And, and where the snow melt's going to go, and, and, and I don't feel like that, that, it seems like that there just hasn't been a good communication going on between owner and residents, and it seems like that that's a, a pretty big stumbling block right there. You know, I don't even think, I honestly don't think the parking lot expansion is, it's in and of itself, you know, with, with some of the concessions that you've made, is, is, you know, is, is that big of a, of a problem? I think it's more they want to know, okay, what's going to happen? What, you know, who's going to take care of the plants? Who's going to, who's going to remove the snow? You know, they, those are things that I think you guys need to, need to work. I mean, it seems like that the bigger problems need to be worked out, not here, to me.
Right. So just to kind of wrap that thought up, the, the owner did go to the extent of getting an attorney, right? And the attorney has, is, is working with the HOA, right? There's ongoing discussions. I was under the impression, walking in here without the attorney, that there was an agreement in principle, right? So there's an effort, and we're going to continue to listen, and I'd much prefer to do this not in the public eye, but I think we were asked to come back, so we wanted to come back and give a, an update.
Good. I look forward to everybody's input in a, in a later meeting. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Patel.
So I would say no to the potential parking allowance, so forth, okay? So, but also, I have a question, was, as somebody was, maybe you don't have an answer for that, but if somebody was to drive in to that, those nine employee parking spots, do you foresee them pulling in and then backing into a spot, or doing a complete turnaround, coming out and backing in? Yeah, and facing out towards, towards Main Street?
Yeah, so, I, I think, we, we're now signed as employee only, right? So it, it shouldn't be new to anyone that's going to park there, right? I envision them driving through the parking lot in parallel parking like you were taught in school, right?
Facing towards Main Street, exiting towards Main Street?
Of course, yeah, 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 yeah.
I mean, I do too, but.
Yeah.
That causes, if they, if they don't do that, that causes problems for people coming into the site.
So your, your concern. So your, your concern is that they'll, they'll cross the line and nose in?
No, they'll stop, they'll pull in and try to park there.
Yeah.
With somebody else coming in behind them trying to park as well in, in the site, the regular site.
Okay.
Possibly, you know?
Okay, yeah.
Or would they better off be circling the parking lot, pulling out?
Yeah.
And then backing in so they don't cause a problem with a backup at that entrance from Main Street.
Yeah, so.
Maybe that could be instructed to some of the employees. When you do a parallel park or something, you pull into the parking lot, come back out again and park so you're facing Main Street exiting and not causing a backup for anybody. Residents are new patients coming in, having to wait to somebody to parallel park.
Mm-hmm, yeah, no, absolutely.
So, but just a observation and so forth and so on, but, you know, that's it.
All right. So just the last, just, just to hit on a couple, I forgot, one of the ones that had been mentioned was the comment about snow on weekends. Obviously, that's something that, snow on weekends, there was a concern that, you know, obviously that should be addressed in the agreement as to snow removal.
Absolutely.
Whatever the time is, how long from storm to clean up.
Right.
Rather, that shouldn't matter whether it's Monday, Sunday, whatever, that, that should be addressed in that, so.
Absolutely. And just so you have a sense, and I think you know, but for the benefit of the HOA, it's not the dentist that will be plowing, right? Like, so it's going to be an actual landscaper, snow removal company that works when it snows, regardless of whether or not it's Monday or Sunday, right?
Like I said, but for the next time, if that's something to alleviate.
I believe it was one of the comments that I saw coming through the email, so, yep.
And then, just to address, because, you know, it got brought up, but so everybody understands, you know, we're, we're not checking water calculations for drainage. That's sent to our engineering department. When the engineering department tells us it's fine, we believe them. If they tell us it's not fine, we tell them to go back and fix it. So while I understand that there have been questions raised about it, but if we don't get the okay from engineering, that what's been presented is okay, we don't go forward with that with us just making it up. So just everybody feel, you know, I hope you'll feel confident that none of the five people sitting up here are running water calculations on drainage. Somebody who knows what they're doing is doing that. So I don't, you know, I'm, I'm not going to get into whether or not what was brought up is valid or invalid. That's not what I mean. I just want to make sure that everybody understands that if there's something asking about drainage questions, that drainage question is going to get shifted over to someone in engineering to give us an answer, just like the plans were sent over to engineering to get us an answer as to whether or not what was submitted is correct or not, and will do what it's required to do under the rules, under the bylaws, et cetera, et cetera. Okay? No, because that's going to be a back and forth, and I don't want to be a back and forth. I just wanted to make sure everybody's clear that, you know, we, we'll take in any comments that are made, but just remember, you know, that's how we deal with it. The engineering department tells us whether it's okay or not. All right. And then the last one I want, and this is just to re, just with you, is, you know, we, we may find ourselves with a, with a, you know, decision to make versus want versus need or absolute need. So that's definitely something that I want, you know, you to have your conversation internally about. Like I said, if nothing changes, that's fine. I'm not telling you to change it, you know, or not. You, you know, your client's going to tell you what they need, but like I said, you know, want versus need are going to be, you know, may, may come down to an important answer.
Mm-hmm, okay, understood.
So, all right. So I think with that, I have a motion to continue this until, where are my paperwork? 7:30 on 10:30. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Motion made in second, all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so that gets us 1238.
Mr. Chairman, if you could just give me for a second, just one little refill.
Yeah, sure. All right, we'll give everybody a second just to clear out, because I think most of the room is probably going to clear out. One second. Actually, I think even Mr. Champ are out in the other room, I think we can handle the next hearing. Six.
I would just say, make a note that if you want to continue to talk, to keep going around the building, because it's going to echo like all.
Okay. So anybody who's within earshot of me at this point, if you guys are going to have any more conversations about this, as far from the two doors as you can is best, because otherwise it echoes right back into the room and at some point I'll have to come out there and then shoo you in further anyways. So if you go further down the hall or out to the right, it won't echo back in.
Thank you.
All right. So even with Mr. Champ out, I think we can handle the next two, actually, which is 1600 Shaw Sheen Street, who's asked to be continued. That's Shaw Sheen Street 1, we'll call it, which is aye. So can I have a motion to continue that to 7:05? Or more? Motion made, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second, all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. And then 1600 Shaw Sheen Street 2, also requesting to be continued. We'll do that one for 7:10. Have a motion to continue to that? A motion made, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second, all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Also let the record show that Mr. Champ has stepped back in, but we just wanted to get rid of the two continuances, so we could move on to in-person business, which is Agenda Item K. This is 836, 846 Main Street, continue from our 9:25 meeting.
Good evening. Sorry.
Name for the record?
Michael Columba.
Floor is yours.
Okay. After the last meeting, I had my engineer prepare and revise the plans with all the recommendations that were made by the engineering office. And so I think we addressed the, the snow, the bike rack, the signage set back and the sidewalks. So if happy to address any questions you may have, otherwise we, we pretty much addressed all of the noted concerns.
All right, stop, Mr. Fertali.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, one of the issues is the sidewalk. Did you read the comments here about the sidewalk? How there's a no need for a sidewalk, but our DPW are insisting on a sidewalk there? So, so where, where does that stand?
My understanding is that we would just go do the sidewalks. I mean, I was prepared to do the sidewalks, but.
Okay, so you will do sidewalks on the old Boston Road side of the property?
I, I guess I have to, and, you know, if my understanding is correct, we will, yes.
Okay, all right. Long, as long as we have that for the record, because it's not what it says here.
To me, that was the only concern. I mean, if I don't have to do them, I won't, you know? I mean, I, I didn't quite understand what the reply was, you know? So I'll take it under whatever, you know, the requirement is, we will comply as necessary.
So the latest submission was received on October 5th and forwarded to the engineering division. I was out of the office until after the, the Columbus State holidays. It was forwarded to them on that following Tuesday, so they have not provided a response yet. What you have in your packets is Mr. Columba's engineer's response, where he did superimpose the engineering department's comments and then provide his comments underneath. So it looks like maybe the engineering department has responded, but they haven't. That was just them being able to do it one by one like that. So they have not responded to the latest submission as of late.
Yeah, because we asked, we called them and they didn't want to meet with us or discuss with us. So I'm basically, let's just do it, you know what I mean? I, I, you know, so whatever the feedback, whatever comes back.
Just for clarification, though, in the event that after the fact, if we were to approve and be done, and then they say, never mind, we don't need the sidewalk, there's no issue with that, right?
No, not necessarily. If you were to make the approval conditional upon resolution, satisfactory resolution of comments of DPW, and they end up reaching an agreement, then there's really no harm, no foul. You could put a provision that in the event that a fee in lieu of is determined to be appropriate, then the engineering division would provide that calculation. It would be incorporated into the approval. But likewise, I don't issue the final approvals until we get that final resolution of, of the plans. So there's no danger of me drafting an approval, getting your signature, filing it, and then resolution coming back after the fact. So everything would be resolved before the formal approvals filed.
Sure. Mr. Fertali?
Yeah, I think, you know, that was all my only concerns is the sidewalk, you know, so as long as we're okay with that, I'm fine.
Yeah, we, again, like I said, I own the building, I'm going to be here for a long time, and, you know, I'd prefer obviously not to spend all the money, but if I have to, I will, and I just want to get things moving.
So, you know, we haven't got final reports from the engineering department, so just so you know.
Yeah, but the worst scenario is that they come back and get it done. So I'm open to it over the next few weeks, and when, when I do the inside my property sidewalks, I just need to know what it is so that I can comply either way, whichever is.
I've seen some work being done on the site, the doors and windows and so forth. It all good?
No, thank you. We, we have a lot of work to do still, but, you know, today's line of getting equipment and supplies and labor has been nothing but a challenge, but it will be a beautiful property when it's done for sure.
You'll be in in no time. Thank you.
Thank you.
All set, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Duffy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So are you still looking for a waiver for the, for the one driveway per 200 feet? You still looking for that?
No, I think we're good with that, right? The father, that was with the issue with the fire truck, right, or the sign? That was with the signage and we.
No, this, this is the back, the back, well, the back driveways, someone's on Old Boston Road, correct?
Right, so there's strict adherence to the zoning bylaw would only allow for one driveway per 200 feet of frontage, and where your frontage wraps around.
Correct.
The two existing ones that are on the Main Street side are definitely not 200 feet apart. And then I'm not sure of the calculation going from the, the furthest Main Street one around the bend to the Old Boston Road. One may also be less than 200 feet, but regardless, typically, typical strict adherence would only allow for one driveway. So technically, a waiver would be required for that.
Okay, yeah.
So judging by your plans, you're asking for the waivers still?
I guess I, I will need a waiver then, yeah. And unfortunately, I, that's what it is, that's what I have to work with.
And do you have a lighting plan in the crystal ball somewhere?
Yes, I submitted one. Yeah, I actually.
Oh, that's your lighting plan.
I, I had one before, but I had to revise it based on the new revised, you know, parking layout. And unfortunately, again, we, we have one submitted to you.
Okay. So it's, I mean, it looks like you're, other than the DPW issues, your, your water runoff and drainage issues, you, you have addressed most things, but there's no signage plan either at this point? You can come back at a later date with that or?
On the signage, we, we did find the location that will comply with all the requirements. It, it is shown on the new revised plan. My sign guy is waiting for my word tomorrow, and I'll just have to go and apply, you know, as required, and we will put a sign complying with all the requirements.
Okay. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman, for now. Thank you.
Mr. Champ.
I think all of the comments and concerns I have have been reflected by Mr. Fertali's comments, Mr. Duffy's comments. As stated previously, I think you're, you have a difficult and challenging site. I think you're doing, you know, a major improvement to it. And I believe that in the past, this board has been willing to accept that, you know, we're taking steps forward even if we can't get all the way there. So I'm not going to have any problem with your waivers. And as soon as engineering is satisfied and the sidewalk issue is resolved, I look forward to seeing this go through.
I'm appreciative of the cooperation thus far. Thank you.
Sluson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just real quick, is there parking spaces in front of this dumpster here? I'm kind of looking at the plans and.
Yes, that's employee parking. That's pretty much reserved for employees only.
Okay. So what would the plan be when it comes time to empty that? Would tell them to move certain days?
No, we will coordinate a pickup time that will coincide with the favorable, you know, less need for parking, you know, because we're going to be, you know, prolonged distance for breakfast, lunch, and dinner. So we'll probably have a small crew in the morning or, you know, whatever it is, we'll, we'll coordinate with the pickup.
Got it. All right, I think that's my only other outstanding concern.
Okay. With the exception of the sidewalk, what, what else is outstanding?
So the engineering division hasn't reviewed the latest, this first revision.
Okay, all right, okay.
Yeah, so they haven't, they haven't commented on any of the, the stormwater recent metals, basically.
Okay. All right, so obviously, John, we're just, you know, we're going to wait on that. I mean, I have no issues either with the waivers as requested, for the ones, you know, obviously that we control. So beyond that, I think it's just a matter of, you know, engineering signing off on what they've seen and/or correcting anything that they still have an issue with. All right?
We're going to do it right. I mean, I'm not, I'm not trying to dodge any, you know, we want to do it right, you know, we just, tell us where the goalpost is and we'll throw the ball in it.
Not a problem. I'll open it up to the audience, only a couple of folks left in here, so I suspect we're all set. With that, I'll bring it back to the board. It was the pleasure of the board.
We'll make a motion to continue, Mr. Chairman, on our next meeting.
All right, so I have 7:35.
7:35.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second, all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. All right, we'll see you next time.
Thank you much.
Thank you.
All right, that gets us to Agenda Item L, which is a continuation of administrative items. This is 937 North Street Landscape Plan Acceptance.
You think it's easy?
I think I have the easiest one this evening. Mr. Chairman, Woodman, Robert Scarrano, here this evening to clean up some ministerial actions related to a special permit that was granted in 2020 after a long trip through the land court, other appeals, COVID. And here we are on the last condition of the special permit, which is a landscape plan. Landscape plan has been prepared. You have copies, hopefully, of the plan itself. The plan consists of a planting list and a fence. Fence is basically along North Street, four foot high, eight foot panel, solid. It was one of the conditions for parking and turning to prevent light from escaping the site. As a matter of fact, the entire landscape plan is geared around that premise of containing any of the turning traffic, headlights, et cetera, et cetera. As you can see, the site consists of, it's basically bifurcated. There is an easement to the right side of the building. That is a power line easement. There are a couple stanchions that are about 75 feet high, carrying power lines. All of the landscaping and lighting in that area is limited to four foot heights, as is any machinery that goes out there. The national grid standards prevents anything taller from being assembled or situated in that area. As a result of that, most of the taller trees and shade trees are located to the left side of the site, to the front of the building, which actually enters off of International Place. And I know you folks weren't on the board, don't have the benefit of, of having been there when, when this was approved. There is a one-way to North Street with a rumble strip. That is an entrance only. And it is a rumble strip in green, as you can see there, to prevent traffic from going out of the site onto North Street. Most of the traffic is anticipated to go out onto International Place. The landscaping is geared towards International Place, and most of the shade trees are located along International Place. The actual existing buffer is fairly heavy along International Place between this site. And I know it doesn't show it on this plan, but it'll be selectively cut and cut back in order to make room for the shade trees and try to keep as much natural buffer as possible. There is a plant list up in the top right-hand corner of the document that indicates the up in the top right-hand corner of the document that indicates the types of plantings that are listed on the plan. We have major shade trees, red maple. We have ornamental trees, eastern rosebud and river birch. We have a number of evergreen trees that consist of Norway spruce and blue spruce. We have a lot of flowering shrubs, as you can see in the front of the building and to the sides and buffering the building on all sides. You have flowering shrubs and lawn areas consisting of arrowwood, lilacs, winter berry, holly, hydrangeas, dogwoods. They are listed. The wisteria is there as well. Evergreen shrubs such as rhododendrons, junipers, yews, and inkberries are also scattered about and close to the building. The ground cover, you can see to the right, we have dwarf pine mountain and silver grasses in those areas. We have perennials, and the counts are all included on the left-hand side of the chart. And they're consistent with the type of growth and planting requirements associated with the landscaping. There are 176 parking spaces. There are islands that have the amenities planted in them. All of the accoutrements, drainage is all underground. There is impervious surfaces here to pick up the drainage, which was approved by the planning board. The matter did go through a trial, and judge determined that the appellate didn't have any standing regarding any of the approvals that were approved by the planning board in the first instance. The trial was basically reduced to traffic, and the judge also found that there was no standing related to traffic concerns. So we're back here now, just as a ministerial issue, cleaning up the fact that we didn't have a landscape plan that was required for the special permit. Any questions? I'll be glad to answer.
All right. Just before I go around, just again, because we do have new folks from when we did this before, this is really just for the landscaping. Like, we're not going to go back to the permit and discuss the whats and ifs of what was done there. This is just to comply with the last piece of this. So, you know, we'll try to keep our comments to the landscape plan, all right? So with that, we'll start with Mr. Champ.
Do you want better? I have no comments.
Excellent.
Mr. Lozardi?
Likewise, no comment.
Mr. Duffy?
You're right. I mean, we can't go back and, you know, so there's, the only concern that has kind of come up over the past several meetings, or a past couple of meetings, is the landscape plan was interfered with underground utilities. So, you know, there's no way of us really kind of knowing that right now, you know, if, if the underground utilities, you know, in other words, if all the plants are going to be able to go where you say they're going to go.
I will say this. As it relates to utilities, I don't think there's a plan that had as much scrutiny as this one, because National Grid was involved every step of the way.
Gotcha.
So we actually had to sign an assent agreement, and they looked at each planting, each location, each height, to determine that we wouldn't interfere with their utilities. And they're the major utility on here. The sewer is over on International Drive. It's basically in the roadway. The water, the same thing. So as it relates to interference with utilities, I think this plan has gone through that great scrutiny.
Okay.
Mr. Fertali?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of questions for informational purposes only. For the general public, this is 937 North Street, and there's a hotel going there, correct?
That's correct.
All right. So just for the record, the type of hotel, how many rooms? That's all?
I will, I will make one representation that the original permit was a business hotel.
Yeah.
But we all understand that that industry has gone through dynamics. We will be back in front of you related to a change in room dimensions to accommodate what the market is now bearing, which is more of a suite than it is a business hotel. There'll be about the same number of rooms, maybe reduced, no parking, parking law changes, but it'll be just room dimensions and room occupancy, more geared to address the current dynamics and needs in the industry.
Great. So I wanted to get that out to the public in case nobody knew what I knew was, I knew what was going on. Mr. Johnson was here at the time, we went through this whole application process. But for some of the new gentlemen in the public, they weren't aware of what was going on at 937 North Street. But we all know now, so it's going to be a hotel
It is.
to some degree, and to some variation as to how the rooms are going to be, which is great. My only other question is, on the plan, it says concrete sidewalks. So for clarity purposes, bituminous concrete sidewalks or regular concrete sidewalks? I think regular concrete cement sidewalks, correct?
Concrete cement sidewalks. As a matter of fact, some of them may even be heated to reduce maintenance and slippage closer to the building and where the shade hits, hits the site in the winter. So that thought has gone in. They will be all concrete sidewalks. There's no bituminous sidewalks associated with this. There, the heating is something that we're still dealing with. The technology has greatly improved since we were here about that. So if there are any changes, we'll be back in front of the planning board, and we'll certainly be providing any updates and plans on that.
Sure. The landscape plan looks great. Lots of flowered trees and a nice amount of other variable entities here, and a lot of work can put into this. And my last question is, when are we starting this project?
Well, after we get back in front of the planning board and discuss the room dimensions, we have two interested parties that are awaiting that type of information so that they can do their due diligence. Of course, as with any hotel, you need to have a flag. There are a couple of flags that are still interested in the site. The site's dynamic, and I think your hard work on the zoning change and the highway overlay will only lead to more prospects in that regard.
Great, thank you.
All right. Chair has no questions. Again, just to remind you, this is administrative action. It was just moved to the end of the meeting, so no public comment for this one. So with that, take a motion to accept the landscaping plan as submitted.
So moved.
A motion made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second. All's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. That brings us to correspondence. We had no correspondence in the package this week. So we'll move to other business, not know at the time of the posting this agenda. Is there any of that that anyone has?
No updates on other questions or concerns, right, we had previously?
No. All right. With that, I will take a motion for adjournment. So, have a motion made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second. All's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. See you next time. Thank you.